I'd like to bring out your councilmember, Joseph Borelli, and your mayor, Bill de Blasio. So to begin, I'd like to invite up Panya In to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Panya?
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Panya. I'd like to thank our host this evening, the Jerome Parker Education Complex, which includes the College of Staten Island High School for International Studies, Joseph Canelli Principal, the Gainer McCowen High School, Tracy Frey Principal, Marsh Avenue Expedition School, Cara DeAngelo Principal, and Richard Hunsford School, Lindsey Miller Principal. And tonight's co-sponsors, Carl's House of Recovery, the Beanie Foundation, Kojo Staten Island, South Shore Bid, Richmond Valley Merchants Association, Sandy Ground Historical Society, Where to Turn, Community Board Two, Community Board Three, 123rd Precinct Council, I Love Tottenville, Atlantic Village Helmers Association, Conference House Association, and Christopher's Reason. Thank you so much for being here tonight. So we have some special guests here this evening. I'd like to start off with State Senator Andrew Lanza to bring us some brief greetings. Senator?
Fantastic. Good evening, everyone. And Mayor, I can say something that you can't. Welcome to the best part of New York City. We had lunch. He secretly agreed. So I... My name is Andrew Lanza. I have the privilege, as you know, of representing the good people of Staten Island. We are a really compassionate, decent, law-abiding borough, and it is really a privilege to have you here. Mayor, Councilman Borelli, thank you for doing this. And I'm sure you're gonna get a lot of great questions, and you're gonna have a lot of good answers.
Thank you, Senator Lanza. Next up, your Assemblymember, Michael Cusick.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for being in the 51st Council District and the 63rd Assembly District. You're more than welcome to be here. And to all the civic leaders here and the residents of Staten Island, welcome. I'm glad to see so many people here today and ask some great questions and get some things done tonight. So thank you for taking part in this. This is really encouraging, and this is really important to make government work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Assemblymember Cusick. Next up, Assemblymember Ronald Castarina Jr.
All right, gentlemen. This is a ten-round bout. Keep it clean, no punches below the belt. I'm kidding. I'm Assemblyman Ron Castarina, and it's a pleasure to be here. I thank the mayor for being here. Before we get started, I would just like to take a moment to recognize the NYPD for what they've done for us recently in light of a terrorist attack. You're always there for us. We appreciate it. Staten Island loves you. The 62nd Assembly District loves you. It's always good when the mayor, when City Hall comes to Staten Island. We're happy to have you, Mr. Mayor. I know that unfortunately at times, Staten Island sees you as the politician that they love to hate. But there's also an opportunity to redeem ourselves. And I think that this is a great night where we have our constituents here to talk to you, to address the issues. And you're good enough to be here. The councilman is here to moderate. We thank Councilman Joe Borelli for all that he does for the district. And we thank you for being here, and we hope this will be a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember Castarina. Now, I'd like to bring up Assemblymember Nicole Malia Takas.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here with all of you. I want to thank the mayor for coming to Staten Island. I really think this is a wonderful opportunity. For the last six months, I was asking a lot of questions. But now you all get to ask questions. And so he probably feels as comfortable as I did when I was campaigning in Park Slope. I want to thank the mayor, really, for having this. It really shows a lot that he's coming here after the election. Because, you know, a lot of times after the election, people forget about the communities that they represent. So I think that really does say a lot about his willingness to listen. And I hope a lot of the issues that we've been talking about over the last six months and that I'm sure will be raised today, property taxes, transportation, quality of life. We look forward to working. And I've said the day after the election, when we spoke on the phone, any way that I can assist in making those things a reality, to help our community, I'm willing to do that. So thank you very much. And thank you to Councilman Borelli for co-hosting this event.
Thank you, Assemblymember Malia Takas. Now I'd like to invite up your councilmember as tonight's host, Joe Borelli.
You know, I had two jokes I was gonna choose from. And you have Marco here, who sounds like the announcer at a boxing match. And this is kind of shaped like a boxing ring. And that was the joke I was gonna go with. And Ron stole it from me. The other one was gonna... In the spirit of Jimmy Kimmel, I was gonna call on you. And as I called on you guys, I was gonna read your mean tweets and things you said about the mayor on Facebook earlier. But I just want to say thank you to the mayor. You know, look, we know the results of the election. We know some people on Staten Island weren't always in agreement with Mayor de Blasio, myself included. And I think we should be honest about that. I do want to share one story about the mayor, that conversation he and I had with our borough president a couple of months ago. So we're standing on the side of Veterans Road West, and it's the start of the spring paving season. And we're paving one of our roads, and it's looking nice. And the mayor, we start talking about the election and what's going on. And the mayor looks over to us and says, "You know, I just want in 20 years, some people on Staten Island to look at their friends and say, 'Boy, that de Blasio, he was a jerk. But he did pave our roads pretty good.'" And I say that as a joke, obviously, but I want to just talk about, you know, the reason why we're here. And I think, you know, things like that, the real pragmatic solutions to our problems, the real problems we face, like potholes, the real problems we face, like crime, these are the things that we're hoping to talk about tonight. So I want to hand the mic over to our mayor. I want to thank him. And I hope you all join me in giving him a big round of applause.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I want to thank you for this opportunity to be with you. And I want to say at the outset, a town hall meeting for me is about as good as it gets in terms of democracy actually working when people who care about their community come out, raise their concerns, raise their ideas, hold us accountable. And, you know, for me, it is also something that reminds me how much people care. Because everyone here had a long day already. And it wouldn't have been hard to stay home and watch TV. But you came here tonight because you care about the community. And a lot of people in this room give their all for the community in a whole lot of different ways. So I want to ask you to recognize each other. Give your neighbor a round of applause for being here tonight and being a part of this. We got a lot to cover tonight. But we also are blessed to be in this season. It's the first night of Hanukkah. So Happy Hanukkah to everyone who celebrates. A very Merry Christmas to everyone. Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year. I want to say everything upfront. Happy... See, I like to recognize all the different holidays at once and honor them all. And it's a beautiful time of year in every way. Because people take stock of the blessings in their life, their family, their neighborhood, everything that matters to them. And it's a time of year even New Yorkers slow down a little bit and appreciate each other more. So again, my appreciation to everyone who's here. And I also want to extend my appreciation to the elected officials who are here. And I want to just say about each of them, because I've worked with all of them. I want to express my appreciation for how they defend the interests of this borough and the city in Albany. Andy Lanza and I served in the City Council together. And yes, we come from different parties. But if you spend any time around Andy Lanza, it's almost impossible not to like this guy. And it's impossible not to respect him. And a lot of times, we would find ourselves almost by accident agreeing on some things. We instantly said, "Well, we gotta do something different here." But Andy, thank you for all you do. And a lot of times, you know, also looking at the reality of Albany, a lot of times, you are the person, the person, who in something really matters to New York City, whether it's about our police, our schools, whatever, you may be the one person in Albany who saves the day sometimes. And you're modest about that, but it's true. Let's thank Senator Lanza for all he does. Ron Castarina, thank you for stealing Joe Borelli's joke. Keeping him off guard. Again, I really have appreciated our relationship and thank you for all you do. And again, I appreciate everyone who goes up to Albany and fights for us. Let's thank Assemblymember Castarina. Mike Cusick, we have known each other forever. And again, in many a time, you've pulled me aside and told me, "You know, I don't know if people agree with you on that in Staten Island." And, you know, I got the memo. But you've been an honest broker throughout. And thanks for all you do for protecting the city and the borough in Albany. Let's thank Mike Cusick. And Nicole Malia Takas. Someone said there was an election recently. I don't remember. Nicole, we had a great conversation the day after the election. And it was, you know, you and I said to each other, "This is what there should be more of in the world." Because we express mutual respect and also the desire to do work together, regardless of party. And I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank you because I know your offer to help work together for the good of the borough and the city was heartfelt. And I thank you for going up to Albany, which is not an easy place, and defending the needs of all of us. Let's thank Assemblymember Malia Takas. Before I talk about the councilmember, I want to first indicate over here we've got a lot of key people from the administration and leaders of a lot of the most important agencies of the city government that affect your life every single day. So tonight, sometimes when you raise questions or concerns, they'll step forward and join me as part of the response. But every town hall meeting, this is number 47 councilmember that I've done around the city. Every town hall meeting comes with a bonus, which is all these folks are there at the end. So we're gonna go till about 10 o'clock tonight. I want to say just upfront, we ask everyone, please, when you raise your concern, one per person, so we can get to as many people as possible. It's really important. We want to hear from as many people. So one issue or concern or question per person, please give us the, you know, blunt-to-the-point version of it so we can get to it and have a real discussion about it. And we don't tend to do a lot of back-and-forth, you know, talking through an issue. I try and give you as best answer I can give. And then, obviously, we'll all follow up. Our commissioners and all will follow up. But these folks at the end, after, when you get to 10 o'clock, they're still here. And if you've got the energy in you and you still have issues you want to talk about or follow-up you want to do, they're right there. They're standing right there. All you have to do is walk up to them. You do not need to make an appointment. You don't have to wait a month. They're right there. Now, every time we have a town hall meeting, some people are worried. It's a long day. These folks have been working all day. They're great public servants. Will you be keeping them up too late? Will you be inconveniencing them? So here's my statement to you. They are such dedicated public servants. They love their job so much, they will stay here all night if you want them to. All right? It's the way it should be, right, Ron? And they're ready for you. Councilman Joe Borelli. So the more we have worked together, I will say from my side equation, the more respect I have for you as we work together, you're a man of strong views. They don't always have to be the same as mine for me to respect them. I see how hard you work. I see how much homework you do. Again, at City Hall, our view is it doesn't matter what party you are in or what part of the city you come from. If you have the right idea, if you have something that needs to be fixed. I mean, the repaving issue is a great example. The city need to do better on repaving for years and years and years. Joe Borelli is one of the people who said it most strongly to me that it was something that needed to be done differently and better and more. And that for your district, very few things were more important than getting that right. When you've got a councilmember who fights for you with intelligence and substance and persistence, it makes a big difference. It really does move things at City Hall. So we can have different philosophies. We can come from different boroughs. We can come from different parties. But I respect Joe Borelli. Let's give him a round of applause. Now, I'm gonna do a few things upfront. I want to just give you a couple updates. And then we'll jump right into whatever is on your mind. First of all, an update everyone already has. We had a very tough day yesterday. And a day that was very unsettling to people in this city. But what I always am reminded of every time our enemies attempt to attack us is I'm reminded how strong New Yorkers are and how strong New York City is. Our first responders did an outstanding job instantly addressing the situation. And even more amazing was how quickly the NYPD deployed additional forces all over the city to make very, very clear that we were in a strong, ready position for anything that might be going on. And this is something we should be very proud of as New Yorkers. So I'm never gonna belittle how unsettling it is, even if it's a lone wolf and the investigation's still going on. But from what we know so far, it was one person acting alone. But it does not make it any easier for us to experience that. What we do know is the people of this city are tough and resilient. What we do know is we have the finest police force anywhere in the country. And we know we are ready. And we know we're strong. So I just wanted to share that with people. And look, one of the things that we've endeavored to do, and the City Council's been crucial to this, is to add to the strength of NYPD. In the last two years, there are 2,000 more officers on patrol than there were two years ago. And that makes a big difference. Why did we add 2,000 more officers? Because we knew it would make us safer. Because we knew it would allow us to add anti-terrorism capacity. In the last two years, we added the 500-member-plus Critical Response Command, which has been outstanding in preventing terrorism and being available to respond, God forbid, if we ever experience any challenge. And it's made a big difference. It's also been a core part of why we've been able to strengthen the relationship between police and community through neighborhood policing. So it doesn't get, I think, maybe the attention it should. But adding 2,000 more officers allowed us to strengthen what was already an outstanding police department. And in this community, in this borough, in this district, the results speak for themselves. And I want to note, in every precinct that touches your council district, crime is down. In the 1-2-1, crime is down almost 8% this year compared to last year. Let's give them a big round of applause for that. I will also say there are still three weeks left in the calendar year. And I am not going to offer any specific predictions. I will simply say, because of the work of these leaders and the men and women who serve under them and the men and women of NYPD in all five boroughs working more closely than ever with community partners, we are on a pace to have the lowest crime we have had in almost half a century in this city. That's something everyone should be proud of. Very quickly, a couple other huge issues that mattered to all of us. Education. I was a community school board member when I started out. My kids went through public school the whole way. And that's what really inspired me to do some of the things I have been most proud of, including pre-K. Councilmember in your district, I'm proud to say, in just four years' time, the number of kids in full-day pre-K has more than quintupled. I learned that in public school. Quintupled. Did I get one more kid? All right. And I want to give you an example. And this is something Staten Island has gained, and I'm proud to say this, has gained disproportionately from pre-K. Saw some of the biggest increases in the whole city proportionally. Your district, four years ago, had 779 full-day pre-K seats. Today, it has almost 4,000 full-day pre-K seats. We are on the road to the next step. 3K, three-year-olds getting full-day, free, quality, early childhood education. 3K. Now, this is something that's to be grateful for parents. Parents know in this city, if you have to find a place that is safe and secure and will help your three-year-old to learn... And look, some parents would rather have their three-year-old at home, of course. But a lot of parents want their three-year-old in an educational setting or have to work and don't have a choice. If you're looking for that in this city today, you are paying at minimum $10,000 a year. In a lot of cases, $15,000 or $20,000 or more. Our goal is to not only give all of our kids across the board, every neighborhood, of every borough, of every background, the same strong start, but to lighten that burden on parents and on families that are struggling. Because I don't know many people who can afford $10,000 or $15,000 or $20,000 a year. So we want to make it easier. And I want you to know this is another example where Staten Island will be in the first wave. We've got a couple of districts that have begun it this year, a couple more that will go next September. And then, in September of 2019, Staten Island will get full-day pre-K for all your children. 3K. 3K. One more thing after school. This is something I don't... I don't think we've done a good enough job getting this word out to people, so I want to emphasize it. Middle school kids in this city now, every part of the city, sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders, get after-school for free. There was a period of time where after-school programs were being cut back in the previous administration. I'm a big believer in after-school. After-school means that kids have a safe, secure environment. They get tutoring, cultural programs, recreation programs, a lot of things that really help them. It extends the school day in many ways. But it only works if it's available in every neighborhood. It only works if it's free. It's now a universal right for middle school kids. So, Councilman, the good news is, again, compared to four years ago, you had 220 after-school seats in your district. Today, you have almost 500 after-school seats for middle school kids. We're proud of that fact.
I feel like I'm on The Price is Right.
You are. It's like that.
Wonderful.
And you get a car. And you get a car. But I ask everyone, since everyone here is very involved in community, please, if you know any family with a middle school kid who wants after-school, it's not always in their same middle school. Sometimes it's somewhere else in the neighborhood. But we are committed to it being universal. So there should... There's a seat for every kid. And some people have said to me, "Hey, we've got a lot of kids. Can we start a new program? Is that possible?" The answer is yes. If there's enough middle school kids who need service in a community and there's not a program that can support them, we will put additional funding in because it's something we really care about. So please, spread the word so we can help make sure more Staten Island kids get that. Now, let me go really quick. I'm just gonna jump around different topics. Go to the repaving we talked about. So, Councilman Borelli, I bet you want to know how many miles we've repaved.
Well, how many, Mr. Mayor?
Well, thanks for asking. I thought you'd never ask. So we talk about lane miles. So that's one side of the street. The lane miles, since this administration began on Staten Island, 693 lane miles have been repaved. Do you want to know what that would mean if you were driving a car out in New York City and going somewhere?
What would that mean if I was driving a car? How far would I go?
Exactly. How far would you go? You could drive all the way from New York City to Detroit, Michigan.
Why would I go there?
Well, I'm not saying you'd do that. It was kind of hypothetical, okay? That went right over his head. But the point is, that repaving program has only just begun. And again, I know the borough president's not with him... With us, I have to say, he had the best phrase when he said, "Pave, baby, pave." That, we believe in it. We're gonna keep that going. It is a 10-year plan. We're gonna keep repaving. City Council's been there all the way with us. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Another piece related to our roads. We continue to see with Vision Zero that it's making progress, there's more to do. But we had the safest year on record in terms of reducing fatalities for motorists, for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for everyone. And by the way, the fatalities so often mean our seniors and our children. Let's be honest about that. So reducing those fatalities is particularly precious. The lowest year for those fatalities on record was last year. This year we are on pace to lower the number of fatalities still. And we're gonna keep going. It is such a big deal. We've made a huge impact here on Staten Island. And again, Vision Zero is something that gets stronger all the time. There are people walking around today, just like we know. We know because of the work of the NYPD, there are people alive today who would not have been alive but for their efforts. We know that's true of Vision Zero as well, and we're gonna keep building it. And one last thing about traffic and, and our roads. So when councilmember Borelli gets an idea in his mind, he tends to be persistent. He has been very persistent about the need for a safer U-turn at the outer bridge. That work is underway. Obviously, it's been a very dangerous situation with what's been going on with the illegal U-turn. We want to make it legal, we want to make it safe. And councilmember, thanks for really pushing us to get that done. It will be done early in the new year. So thank you for that. Terms of Staten Island Ferry, again, strong advocacy from the councilmember and your other elected officials to restore the lower level boarding. And we did that in September. It did cost additional money, but from what I've seen so far, it was worth the money to make it easier for people to board. We're gonna keep moving with that. But also, councilmember Borelli has rightfully said, we gotta make the way people move around the terminals easier. We've gotta figure out how to reduce the congestion that people experience. And we are gonna do, and this again largely due to his advocacy, a study that'll be ready in January, that will tell us the next steps that we have to take to make the experience for everyone who takes the ferry easier and better and faster. So thank you, councilmember, for leading the way on that. Just a very quick note I want to make, and again, the councilman's pushed us in a very productive way on this. We are expanding our efforts as a city on behalf of our veterans. I will say, and this is editorial comment, I wish our country, and this, this is across every administration of both parties, I wish our country had done a better job supporting the needs of our veterans, their healthcare needs, their occupational needs, everything. Everybody knows that that wasn't done the way it should have been done. We in New York City had to make a decision, were we going to step up and fill some of that gap? And we know we can't do the same thing the Veterans Administration does, and we know we have our limits. But, you know, this is the city in America with the most veterans. And I bet so many people in this room are either veterans themselves or have family members. For me, it was my father who served in World War II in the Army and served in the Battle of Okinawa and came back with half a leg missing. And that affected my life, my whole family's life, but most especially his life. I saw what our veterans give to us. My wife's dad served in the US Army in Europe during World War II. So we're a family that honors our veterans and we're a family that's also noted that our nation didn't always give what should be. So the city of New York stepped up with the support of the councilmember. We started the first time ever in the history of the city Department of Veteran Services. And is General Sutton here?
No.
No? Thought you were there, but the members of the department are here. Okay? And we are now expanding our efforts to make sure the veterans have the housing they need. I for one think there should not be such thing as a homeless veteran in the United States of America. We owe it to our veterans to find them housing. But we're also doing things like trying to increase the occupational opportunities, both for the city, in city government, but beyond. You know, when you hire a veteran, you know you're getting a quality person, and a proven person. And General Lori Sutton, who runs our Veteran Services Department, makes the point that sometimes the veteran themselves, because of the challenges they face, maybe they are not in a position to get a job, but their spouse or another family member needs that job. Hiring a veteran family that matters, a family member matters too. So we're trying to focus in the city on making sure veterans have housing, healthcare, including mental healthcare, and that occupational support. And I want to ask everyone, this is something that makes a lot of sense, especially at the holiday season. This is something everyone can do. If there's any veteran in your life who needs help, our Department of Veteran Services is there to help them. And if anybody in this room hires as part of the work you do, hires people, please, you can make a big difference by hiring a veteran. Everyone agree with that? Finally, just a couple of very quick last things. One about healthcare and health concerns here on Staten Island. Councilmember Borelli raised an issue to me a few months ago. And I know he raised it publicly, which was the right thing to do. And he said that we all know the history of fresh kills and we all know the unfairness. But beyond the unfairness of the past was the question of whether there was a negative impact on people's health in the surrounding communities. And he called me up and he said, there needs to be a new study. And I talked to the Health Department, and they had some research, but they didn't have the research the councilmember was asking for. And I thought his idea made a lot of sense. So I'm here to announce tonight, we are funding a $350,000 study, the new Fresh Kills Landfill Cancer and Asthma Study, to find out the truth. That study will start immediately. It will be done by the end of the coming year. And then, councilmember, I can pledge to you in front of everyone, whatever we learn from it, whatever we need to do to protect the health of people, we'll be ready to do it. Let's thank him for his leadership. Lastly, on our parks and every part of this city, people love their parks. As people live in the biggest city in the country, we, we have a particular feeling for our parks, and we probably need them more than anyone. This is a borough blessed with amazing parks, but we do not rest on our laurels. In fact, just today, the councilmember, together with our DEP Commissioner Vinnie Sapienza, officially opened Brookfield Park. I want you to know, this is not a small matter, it's a former landfill also. The state put money in, the city put $156 million in to clean it and turn it into a park. And this is amazing to me, 258 acres. 258 acres of new parkland. My final point this evening is another announcement. And councilmember advocated for this and said this is something that would really help the community and, and would make up for something long overdue. So there's a park I know is beloved in the community, officially known as Seaside Wildlife Nature Park, also known as Pirate Park. And I know it's a popular place for so many people in the community. I also know that for a while now, there has not been a bathroom there. They always call it a comfort station. I don't know, that's a little too new age. Bathroom okay with you? There hasn't been a bathroom. It's hard to enjoy a park when there's not a bathroom, that's my personal view. So the city of New York, at the request of the councilmember, will be investing almost $6 million to install a bathroom at Pirate Park.
Mrs. Borelli and her friends, thank you.
Huh?
Mrs. Borelli and her friends, thank you.
Yes.
With all their children.
The whole Borelli family. All right, those are the updates and announcements. Again, thank you to everyone for being a part of it. And I want to wish everyone again, very, very happy holidays, and councilmember, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you said such nice things about me. You know I run in a Republican area, and you're kind of ruining my street cred. All right, thank you. So I, I see about, you know, 300 people here, and I know about 150 names. And I don't want anyone to think that I don't know your name if I actually do, or vice versa. So I'm not gonna mention whose name I'm calling. Is that okay with everyone? I don't want to be embarrassed. But since it's the first night of Hanukkah, and Kojo sponsored this event, I will give the first question to Scott Moore.
Please tell my name?
Oh yeah, I forgot. To the nice, well-appointed gentleman in the suit. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for coming out tonight, for all your good, uh, the report. Councilman Borelli, thank you so much for hosting, all the elected officials for coming out, and the wonderful New York City Police Department that keep us safe. We thank you so much for everything you do every single day. There was a lot of talk about parks and about landfills, and those are very important issues. But there's one issue that we all could agree on, that's the, the drug epidemic on Staten Island. It's, it's running rampant throughout the country, it's running rampant in this borough alone. And as a community leader, I want to know what we can do to help, but more importantly, not just from, and the New York Police, City Police Department does a wonderful job catching the drug dealers, but that doesn't, you cut off the head and another head grows back, and that seems, what could we do to help this epidemic, to stop this epidemic, and to do more work in order to educate the people what we should be doing?
It's a great question. Thank you. And I know you've been deeply involved on this issue, I thank you for it. It's, this is an epidemic, this is a crisis. First, we have to be very clear, no one's mincing words about this one. It is, it's true, it's nationwide, but what's scary about it is it's rural areas, it's urban areas, it's every part of the country. Staten Island, one of the hardest hit in the city. The Bronx is the other place particularly hard hit. Very different environments, but this is the equal opportunity killer. And we, we need to fight it with everything we got. Police are doing amazing job, particularly getting fentanyl supplies and cutting them off everywhere they can. There've been a lot of gang takedowns and other activities that are disrupting the supply. So you're right, you can't, you can't say that you can ever make the supply go away 100%. But every time we disrupt the supply and slow it down, helps, especially fentanyl, because it's so deadly. But I think you're right, also, it's much more deep than that. We, we are trying with expanded treatment opportunities, with expanded opportunities to educate the public in general, young people in particular. I know that's been great here on Staten Island, the Too Good for Drugs Initiative, which the Borough President has championed, we've been supporting that and growing that. The, the use of naloxone or Narcan, which is much more available than it used to be, all of our first responders now have it. We're continuing to deepen the distribution all over the city. That's saving a huge number of lives, that you can reverse an overdose in its tracks. But I'm gonna speak humanly to the core of your problem, or the core of the problem you raise, I should say. The number one thing is we've got, in fact, Chief DeLittori and I were just talking about this. We've got to get everyone to feel comfortable, that God forbid someone in their life has this problem, we gotta know about it. The police have to know about it, our health officials, whoever you can get to. We need to know if someone is in the thralls of addiction. It's very hard to talk about. It's very, very hard. I understand, you know, I'm a parent, my daughter went through challenges, she's doing great now. But I know when you're a parent, it's hard to talk about your children or anyone in your family, or anyone in your life. One thing that is different now that we need to use more, and I ask you to spread the word, is now we have this single mental health and substance abuse hotline. This is part of the Thrive Initiative that my wife's championed, and it's a very simple notion. It's 888-NYC-WELL. The power of that is anybody can call. You can call if you have a challenge of any kind, you can call for someone else. But they can connect anyone instantaneously to treatment for opioids. We do have treatment available. We continue to expand it, but, but the fact is, we have treatment available all the time. The bigger problem is getting people to come forward and accept the treatment. So now, if we can help people understand, at any point, 24 hours a day, if it's time to talk to someone and say, there's this person in my life, what do I do? There's a human being at the other end of the line who is trained in how to handle it, who will literally help you make the appointment and make sure you get the appointment you need. So it's all of the pieces I mentioned, but I want to say, every person on Staten Island can be part of the solution by helping everyone to know, if you need help, or a loved one needs help, it is available, pick up the phone. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? There's a microphone right there.
Good evening, and thank you for coming, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jean Guerre, I'm the president of the Travis Civic Association. You're very familiar with Travis?
Love your parade.
Thank you.
Love your parade.
And I'm glad you said that, because that's my point tonight, my topic. The stretch of Victory Boulevard between Travis Avenue and Glen Street, which you've marched down.
Yes, I have.
Is very narrow. One lane on each side, no parking on those. Tractor trailers are currently going back and forth on that. My, my concern and my request is to change that portion of Victory Boulevard between Travis Avenue, it's one mile, between Travis Avenue and Glen Street, to a local truck route that would prohibit 18-wheelers, it would allow just lightweight trucks, six wheels, no more. Right now, it's a full truck route.
Okay.
And, and it's very dangerous. We got PS-26, we have restaurants, we have residential. It's very, very dangerous. One, one other thing. In the beginning of 2018, in the spring of 2018, they're going to begin a three-year sewer project that's going to tear up Victory Boulevard from Ridgeway to Glen Street. That means steel plates are gonna be on these roads with tractor trailers running over them day in and day out, all hours of the day and night. It's not a good, it's not a good situation.
So Commissioner, so I think this is different than the one we talked about before. Right, so do you know the situation?
I, I am familiar with this one, and we, I do know the issue, and you are right, sir, we do have a big water and sewer project coming in there. So, you know, we're, I know you've talked to our Borough Commissioner, and I'm happy to talk to you about that. One of the challenges we always have in rerouting trucks is you then have to find another route for them. One of the challenges we have in New York City is where to reroute the trucks. But again, we know this big project's coming.
Just, I don't want, again, I'm, I said upfront, I just want to remind you, I don't want to do back and forth because we want to get to as many people. The Commissioner, I can say for, with assurance, we are taking it seriously now that you've raised it. I want you to do a personal follow-up. But the question, although 100% agree with you, you have to have an alternative. I, I have marched the route, it is narrow, and the proximity of the schools, I think it's good to assess, I'll say it this way, can we find a better alternative? Because if we can, we should act on it. So she'll follow up for sure. Thank you.
All right, let's go back here. Sir, young guy.
How are you, Mr. Mayor? My name is Eric Roman. I am in NYPD Explorer from the 121st precinct of the New York City Police Department. I recently had the opportunity to save a woman on the Staten Island Expressway, and I want to thank Chief DeLittori for the recognition for that. Thank you. Thank you. My question for you today is, the program, the Explorer program, is for people who want to pursue a career in law enforcement. And we need funding for us to go on. This is the future of the New York City, you know, the New York City Police Department, essentially. And I wanted to know, you know, me speaking to you, is there a way we can get more funding for us to do more ventures, again, to help us out in the future?
Thank you for the question. First of all, let's thank him for being in the Explorer program. I'm a big believer in the program. Here's my simple answer. I have been supportive of the resources we put in to all of the initiatives to help get younger folks involved with NYPD. We have been expanding them. Can we keep expanding? I don't know that answer yet, because we're about to start the budget for the next year. And because, and I can say this in the most nonpartisan way possible, councilmember, we don't know what the heck's going on in Washington DC right now.
Good things, good things.
Okay. So I'm glad you're confident. We don't know what the heck's going on in Washington DC right now, and, and a lot of the different outcomes on the legislation could deeply affect our budget. So do I like it? Yes. Do I think we need even more if we have the money? Yes. We'll decide that in the next few months. Thank you, man.
All right. She's really excited, yep.
Hi there. I just have a question. Oh, thank you so much. My question is, where did this idea to come from allocating $800,000 to giving criminals who are leaving court a $15 Dunkin' Donut gift card so they can be rewarded for answering a 14-page, 144-question survey that, on my calculation, would take 6.25 and 8.33 seconds per question to answer, and would, is not fall in with the 15 or 20 minutes that you say it would take. Don't you think the $800,000 would be better allocated to putting maybe an EpiPen in every classroom in the city and public, private schools than rewarding our criminals for poor behavior? Why are we rewarding poor behavior now? This is just something I cannot wrap my hands around.
I got you, I got you, I got you.
Our judges and our.
Ma'am, I got the question. We're not doing speeches tonight, we're doing questions.
Do not need training how to deal with these people.
I got it.
But let them answer. I want to hear the answer.
One more thing.
I got the question.
No, 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 because I have to say three things.
No, no, we're not doing.
One.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Cold water at the fountain, is it cold enough?
We can't do three things per person.
Are the bathrooms clean enough?
Joe?
And are the courtrooms temperature controlled?
I, I really want to hear the answer myself. I want to hear.
Why?
Shh.
Thank you.
I, I love the first question, and I'll defer to the mayor.
One per person so we can get the most people. Ma'am, I, I got you loud and clear, if you'd stop talking, I could actually answer it. Okay. I found out today, for the first time, that this had happened. I assure you, ma'am, I'm trying to answer your question, if you're not gonna, Joe, I want to ask you, it's a point order.
Yeah.
Everybody, I've done 47 town hall meetings, and either you let me answer the question or we go on to the next question. Okay? Everyone, that's a fair ground rule?
You had the crown on that question, you know, it's gotta just wrap it up.
City budget. No, I got it, 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 I got it. The city budget is $85 billion. I have almost 400,000 employees. I certainly do my damnedest to keep up with everything. But the fact that someone somewhere decided to do a study and use Dunkin' Donuts gift cards, I heard about it when you heard about it. Now, I said I was asked by the media today, it's just the honest truth. I don't know when someone decides to do a study with Dunkin' Donuts gift cards, it's just not what comes to my attention compared to a whole host of other issues. I heard about it and I said, I want the people who did this to explain to me if there's any rationale. I share some of your concern for sure. So I will listen to the people who did it to understand if there was some rationale. But I share some of your concern because I don't understand it. And yeah, there's a lot of things we could do with that money for the good of people. So when I hear from the people who did it, I will make a public response of whether I'm comfortable or uncomfortable with the choice. But I want you to understand why this is the kind of thing that literally I don't decide on personally. I will get you an answer. Go ahead.
And good news, everyone here, no, I'm kidding.
Mr. Mayor.
Ma'am?
I wanted to add that we do put EpiPens in every school that has a school nurse.
Thank you very.
And they're donated.
Wait, all right, wait, come up, our health commissioner should say this for everyone's knowledge. Go ahead, Dr. Bassett.
I wasn't gonna take on the part that you were.
Go ahead, Dr. Bassett.
I wanted to let you know, in every school where we run a school, or have our school health program, we do provide EpiPens. We, for every, no.
Ma'am, ma'am.
We have one in every school that's available for use under state law for any child, regardless of whether they have a prescription or a known allergy. And we use these EpiPens, actually, over half of the time, we use them in children who've never had a known allergy. So I want people to know that we are prepared for children with no known food allergies with EpiPens on site in schools. I can follow up with you.
All right, guys, again, just, I want to hear all the answers to the questions too, because these are some of the questions that I have that sometimes I don't get answers to. So I call on you next, sorry.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. I'm actually one of the members on strike against Spectrum Charter. We've been on strike for almost nine months. Thank you. My question is, in Section 17 of the franchise agreement held here in New York City, there is a stipulation for right to bargain collectively, which Spectrum has not, Spectrum has not bargained and honored here in the city of New York. I mean, who's next? If they're getting away with this, who is next? They failed to comply with the portion of this franchise agreement and they're clearly in violation. You're aware that nowhere in this agreement, sorry, I'm a little nervous...
It's okay.
...lists penalties for this violation. As the physical and mental health of the 1,800 families who voted for you and trusted in your concern for our strike while we continue to hang in the balance, we need you to end the franchise agreement. The company continues to violate other terms by hiring out-of-state contractors and enticing union members to cross. Will you commit to end the franchise agreement?
Okay, thank you for the question. Look, I want to give you an honest answer because I know it's very appealing to say exactly what you want to hear, but legally, I don't have the ability to do that at this moment. I gotta be real with you. We are auditing them. We are looking at everything they have done with the city. If we find anything that does give us the legal power to penalize them in any way, I won't hesitate to do it. I'd be happy to do it. But you said something important there. There is not a specific thing they have done yet that would allow us to end the franchise agreement. I know people wish there was, but there isn't. Here's what, I'm just telling you, I've asked the lawyers 100 times over because I'm very frustrated with Charter Spectrum too. So let me, not doing back and forth, I told people at the beginning, I'm gonna say it again, the only way this works with 300 people, you've raised a valid concern, I'm trying to answer it, and then I want to give everyone else a chance to raise their concern. I've been on the picket line, I've been at the rallies, I called the CEO, I called, ma'am... Ma'am, I'm trying to sympathize and tell you the truth. I called the CEO, I said...
Ma'am, ma'am, come on. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, next question, sir here, he was standing.
Hi, my name is John Bossett. I'm a retired New York City correctioner, totally disabled, I broke my neck in the line of duty. Four years ago, they took my pension away and made it $5 a month so I can get my, so I can get my benefits. Okay? They say I owe them $220,000. I called NICEs twice, they have threatened me. Okay, never call back your gum again or we'll take all your possessions. We have lost everything, we had to file for bankruptcy, it's costing me my marriage. Okay. They will not account for the money. They will not account for the money and they told me never to call back again. I have all proof. Senator Lanza's office has all the proof. And they, I had four major operations and I have half metal and almost no vertebrae left on my back. And that's all I gotta say. I've been treated horribly. I get $5 a month pension.
Okay, sir, I'm very, very sorry to hear everything you've been through. Senator, do you want to say something? Senator here, give us... There you go.
Mr. Mayor, first let me say your office is working with us to solve this problem and is, is on this man's side. The issue is very complicated, it's very disturbing. Government made a mistake years ago and now is taking it out of this gentleman's hide. And there are some complex legalities involved here. There is not an easy solution, but there is a right solution.
Okay.
And we're gonna continue to work with your office. But I'm glad that he's here, I didn't know he was gonna be, glad that he's here to bring it to your attention personally because we really need to find a solution here.
So Senator, let me just say, sir, I'm very, very sorry for everything you've been through. And Senator, why don't we personally work on this? We go back a long way since he's been involved, you know, you've been involved directly. Why don't you call me when you feel you have the solution and we'll work on it together? Thank you very much.
Next question.
Thank you.
You got a question?
Yeah.
First of all, thanks for coming out, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borelli. My name is Robert Kelly, I'm from the Staten Island Board of Realtors. And I wanted to just get as strong a message as I can to you about our need to be part of this fantastic New York City fast ferry system that's been up and running now for, I guess, almost two years. I commend you for the idea. I know EDC is very involved in picking the stops that are selected. And I know there's been some, a lot of, a lot of support from our Borough President to try and get us a stop. But to me, I just can't imagine that we've been ignored this long. I mean, we are one of the five boroughs. Right now, I think Brooklyn has somewhere between eight and 10 stops with more on the way. Manhattan has two with two more on the way. Queens has four or five. The Bronx, I'm not sure what they have, but they also have probably the best subway service in the world. We have one ferry. It runs at about 10 miles an hour. My understanding is this boat triples that. The Board of Realtors has done some work with a nautical surveying company and we've estimated that we would get from either Stapleton or St. George, and again, let's start with one stop and then I think we'll, we'll show you that we want it and we'll grow it. But from St. George or Stapleton to Wall Street would be under 15 minutes. That's from docking and launching and back and forth. The next stop, as you know, is 34th Street, which is only another 10 minutes. So that would get Staten Islanders to 34th Street and the FDR in under 30 minutes. That's a game changer for us. And for those, for those of you that don't know, the boat is $2.75. It's the same as a subway and I commend you for subsidizing that. But we don't need just consideration. We need to be part of this system. And I'll end with just one more thing. What really hurts me as a Staten Islander is that Governor's Island got a stop before we did. It's not even a borough, it's a tourist attraction. And I'm in the city a lot, I have a daughter that's looking to go to school in Manhattan next year and I would love for her not to have to dorm, but I'm not gonna have her commute two and a half hours a day. I just, please, just give us one stop and we'll show you it works.
Thank you, I appreciate the question. First of all, wherever he was, Jimmy Otto sensed that this question was about to be asked and he got over here immediately. I've been asked a similar question, but with much less PG language many a times by Jimmy Otto. And the, so, who is a good friend and I respect greatly, but look, let me start at the beginning. I want to say where I think I did something right and I think I did something wrong. I think I was right to say, here's our waterways, as a city, we were not using them in any way that made sense. There were a couple of specific companies that the city engaged with, but it was different companies, different service, different times. The only thing that was consistent was the Staten Island Ferry. And the Staten Island Ferry, obviously a blessing, is free. But, but everyone knew if we were gonna do anything bigger, it couldn't be free. It had to be something that people paid more for. My view from the beginning was, we should have a ferry system that is truly all over and then grows with time and if it works, could be a big part of getting people off the roads, getting people out of overcrowded subways, really could change life in the city, but it would take time. I made the mistake, and this is, I take full responsibility, when I said from the beginning five boroughs, it was my way of saying, well Staten Island already has it, we want to do the same thing for other people. I shouldn't have said that, I should have differentiated, that we're starting up something that connects in different ways, it's different from the Staten Island Ferry, but that places that didn't have any ferry service now will have it. Staten Island had something, now other places would have something. The Rockaways is a great example, except for after Sandy for a while, they never had consistent ferry service for decades. The Bronx does not have it yet, that is planned for next year, but they don't have it yet. Here's, so I think I should have started differently. But here's the way I want to handle it going forward. So there've been several different proposals for Staten Island. South Shore's been a proposal, Stapleton, St. George, different locations, downtown, midtown, different ideas. Okay. There's been an idea going across to Brooklyn that I've heard a few hundred times from the Borough President. Those are all in the hopper now. Coney Island wants the ferry, Canarsie wants the ferry, Douglasston wants the ferry in Queens, the west side of Manhattan wants, everyone now wants it. I don't blame them, it's a good thing. We started the way we started. Warts and all, my mistake for any mistake I made. But the good news is, we didn't know if it would work and guess what? It worked. The ridership is beyond anyone's wildest imagination. The, after a few kinks got worked out, it is working smoothly. And it shows every prospect of being something worthy of expansion beyond the original plan. In 2018, this is my firm commitment, in 2018, at some point in 2018, we're gonna come up with the decision of, can we expand it? Where can we expand it? How far can we expand it? How much will it cost to expand it? Because you're right, it's a substantial cost. You gotta pay to put in the docks, you have to pay for the day-to-day operations. Pray that the situation in Washington does not undercut our city finances too much. Because if we're stable, this is the kind of thing I think would make a huge amount of sense to keep expanding. So you have my commitment, you'll get an answer next year, you have my commitment, Staten Island is very much on my mind, more than one option of what might work. And if we can make it work, we want to make it work. I want to say it very humanly, I want to make it work for Staten Island if I can. And the final thing I'll say, which I think you'll appreciate, a journalist was a little surprised, a couple months ago, we're at a press conference, a journalist was surprised at how popular it was. And he asked a guy who runs, he says, how on earth is this so popular? And the guy, the guy answers, stares at the journalist for a minute and he says, because it's $2.75, it gets you where you're trying to go and they serve wine and beer. So I will look forward to seeing what more we can do on that. Thank you.
I'll go to the gentleman in the blue jacket. Again, let's just keep the questions relatively short if possible.
Mayor, thank you for coming to Staten Island. I just want to ask you one question. I'm having a serious problem with different agencies in Staten Island. They're violating the law, you're breaking the law, and I'm asking you how you could try to help me.
Give me, give me one example, sir.
One example is, it's costing me millions of dollars too. And I have proof to this. Talk is cheap, I have all the records. The city of New York built a school called PS6. They didn't put storm sewers in. They're taking their water deliberately and intentionally and putting it on my property. Deliberately intentionally, that's against the law. Okay? I have went to jail because they had me arrested for being a terrorist and I had to spend $33,500 for a criminal lawyer. I'm asking you, how do I stop the water?
All right, let's get the answer.
That's all I ask.
Our DEP Commissioner, Vinnie Sapienza, and Lorraine Grillo is the President of the School Construction Authority.
So we're looking at each other, not sure, but we'll follow up with you and get the information and take a look out there.
Right.
These two, the two Commissioners will follow up with you, see if we can resolve it.
All right, next question from...
Look, I want to try and work with you. Thank you.
Oh, young lady over there. Gotta go with the kid, you know. Don't ask anything too tough.
My name is Madison.
And what's your question?
Go ahead.
What's your favorite thing about Staten Island?
What's your favorite? Go ahead, you can do it, you got it.
About?
About.
What's your favorite thing about Staten Island?
Oh, I like that. Okay. What, what's, wait, bring back the microphone a second? Bring back the microphone? You did good. What's your name?
Tell them your name.
Madison?
Madison.
Madison, how old are you, Madison?
He's asking you questions, turn around.
Madison, how old are you? Seven. Wow, you may be the youngest person to ever address one of our town hall meetings. Let's give Madison a big round of applause. This is the easiest question I'm gonna get all night. Thank you, Madison. I have a witness over there, the gentleman in the sweater. My favorite thing about Staten Island is Italian food. Who's with me on that? Who's with me?
All right, next one, ma'am in the pink.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you for coming.
Start, the microphone's coming.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you for coming. My name is Karen Goss, I'm a parent and a PTA president of CSI High School. My question is about funding. Our schools are not funded at 100% of need. What determines what percent of money need is to be given to the schools? Why are some schools funded over 100% of financial need while others are 10 to 12% below financial need? Moreover, why are our schools historically received Title I funds funded at a higher need than the Title I, the non-Titled I fund schools? School budgets also do not account for salary steps in the contract, which limits our funding in the classroom programs and limits the school's budget spending capacity. Likewise, if the schools where we already have aren't funded at 100% of need, why does the DOE and the city keep expanding programs when our existing ones aren't fully funded? And how is that equity? The DOE gets beyond a third of our city budget. Why are our monies not getting to the school level in sufficient enough amounts?
Thank you. I really appreciate that question because this is, it's a big issue, it's a complex issue, but the most importantly, it's a longstanding issue that must be fixed. So over the last three years, we consistently brought up the schools that have been underfunded. And we have a specific goal. In the next four years, we hope no more than four years, at maximum five years, with some support from Albany, please, we, if we keep taking in the kind of money we have been getting from Albany in school aid, we will be able to close the gap and bring every school that is not at 100% to the 100% level. We're not, I want to be very straightforward, we're not gonna take away from the ones that have, we don't think that's fair to kids to say, you know, because of whatever mistakes of the past, we're gonna take away from you. The goal is bringing, you know, raise the floor for everyone. Everyone gets to 100%. It isn't, we're in striking range now and we've consistently made progress. Big and important year in Albany coming up. The good news is, I think the wise observers from Albany would agree, they happen to be up for reelection and the good news is, the members happen to be very focused on school aid in those years. And I'd like to urge them to be very focused on school aid because if we can do well, we'll turn that around and bring those schools up even further. Thank you.
Ma'am, in the, yep, black.
Thank you for helping us with the roads, that's huge for us.
Did you hear my slogan? Will you, will you be my witness? What did I say earlier, my slogan? Pave baby pave, right? You heard it? Yes.
Yes, we did hear that.
You have a witness. You have a witness.
And we thank Mr. Otto. Anyway, during your campaign, you said you didn't support increasing the property tax rate. Yet, two weeks after the election, we all received our bills and it went up.
The rate, I'm sorry to interrupt up front, the rate has not gone up. Assessments have gone up depending on property. The rate has not gone up for four years, the rate will not go up. It's, this is a factual matter.
Okay.
I'm happy, I'll bring my, I'll bring my witnesses because both Senator Lanza and Borough President Otto served with me in the City Council when in fact the property tax rate did go up at the proposal of the previous mayor. Property tax rate has not gone up on my watch and will not go up on my watch.
Can you explain to me as an everyday person why people who pay their bill in full, right after the election, the rate went up?
Again...
What went up?
The respecting...
What amount?
The amount an individual may pay because of their assessment of their property could go up because the value went up of their property. But the rate, the amount people, it's like, you know, they're debating the tax rate in Washington right now for the federal government. The rate, are you in the 20% bracket or the 25% only of that? The rate has not gone up. Four years I've been here, hasn't gone up. People have paid more, different people, some people paid a lot more, some people paid less, depending on how much their assessment of their value of their actual property is. Let me jump ahead to that we have to solve something here, there's no question. And I want to give you sort of the good news, bad news of this and be very straightforward. The property tax system in the city is backwards, inconsistent, untransparent, unfair, broken, choose your word. It must be fixed in what's going to be a very difficult and must be an open public process. We're gonna need the state legislature to make some decisions legislatively, the City Council. I'm gonna start this in the coming weeks in the new year and it's gonna be a long, tough battle, but we will end up with a better property tax system. Here's the problem, I want to be honest about it. I cannot at the end of the day end up with a lot less revenue. I know everyone cares about what you pay personally, I'm a homeowner too, I care too. But the revenue we take in to fix the school problem you just heard about, to give schools fair funding, everyone in blue right there and the 2,000 more officers we put on the streets, the pre-K that people really want, everything costs money. So I can create, I think, with everyone's help, a fairer, more consistent system, but at the end of the day, the total dollars we take in from property tax can't change a lot. It might be better distributed, it might be more consistent, but the total amount of money cannot change a lot. money cannot change a lot. That's going to be the thing we have to achieve. That's going to, we're going to put together a group to formulate the legislation, then we're going to bring it to Albany, we're going to bring it to the City Council, it's all going to be out in the open, and I believe we can get to a better place. Thank you.
I'm going to call him the last guy, because he got the worst seat in the House.
What about, what... Oh, thank you. What can you do about the situation caused by the parents in this school who bring their kids, they double park, they triple park, they block their driveway, blow their horns early in the morning, and park in a driveway and leave the car there unattended?
This school here?
This school right here.
Okay, which precinct? Tell me how. There you go. Can you speak to, one to one, speak to...
This school is a challenge, there's three schools and his parents in the afternoon, we have seen that problem, we are sending officers, not every day, but they are coming. We have issued over 170 summonses in the last few months, between Marsh Avenue and Essex Drive. So the offices are there, we are at all the schools, it's the same, it's conditioned at most of the schools at dismissals. The mornings aren't the issue, because we had to stop and drop in place. However, we are sending officers to all different schools throughout the whole precinct, but this school is on our radar.
Because these people walk right into driveway and walk away.
Can you follow up personally, Inspector?
Absolutely.
So the inspector will follow up with you directly.
All right, just a quick halftime, we want to say hello to our Borough President.
Done. No, no, no. Oh, oh! I just, I want to apologize for being late at age 51, as you can tell from the gray in the beard. Every now and then, you have to make sure that you escort the lovely Mrs. Otto to where she needed to be. And I did that. So I apologize for being late.
Smart man, smart man.
What a ham, what a hammy, isn't he? What a nice guy. All right, we'll go this way now. Ma'am, in the, yeah, I don't know what color you have on, a lot of stripes, a lot of stripes.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you personally for helping me. I've had an issue for seven years, I reached out to every city official, and I reached some beautiful young lady from your office, and she really helped me a lot, and finally I'm getting help that I need with a very important matter that I would love to discuss with you, but not in front of these people.
Understood. I'm glad we could help.
Thank you, thank you. God bless you.
God bless you.
Merry Christmas.
Sir with the glasses. You're really excited.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, my name is Sean Abraham, and my parents are huge fans of yours.
Thank you.
My parents, both city workers, my dad's a teacher at New Dorp High School, my mom works at Wagner High School, and I want to first, I'm a Republican, I voted for Nicole, but...
You know, he seemed like such a nice guy.
Eighteen years old.
Wait, wait, but your parents are fans of me?
Huge fans.
Did I win the household, at least?
Yes, of course.
All right.
They hated me because I voted for Nicole, but, anyway, I want to first thank you for signing a contract for teachers.
Yes.
That was one of the biggest priorities, and you did that...
Amen. Our teachers deserved it, absolutely.
One thing that I'm concerned about is that a teacher's job is getting harder over time. We know that evaluations are becoming more and more important, and now I heard, I was reading the Wall Street Journal, that students are allowed to survey and do surveys, and based on their ratings, it can affect a teacher's job. And job security is obviously a big thing in today's economy, and, you know, we know what's going on in Washington DC, we don't, anything can happen with our city budget. You know, my question is, can you help teachers, especially it's a hard job? Can you alleviate evaluations, make sure evaluations aren't a key part in a teacher's job, and, you know, how we have teacher evaluations are a big part of a teacher's job? Can you make sure teacher evaluations aren't a big part of teacher's job or rating-wise?
All right, okay, I think, I think what I'm hearing, I just want to make sure I'm responding properly. Look, it is a very tough job. I think it's a more important job than ever. I'm not saying that to be polite, I think, just think about what's happening in our society. Young people need more education than they ever needed before to succeed in the economy, so the job of a teacher takes on even greater value. And the society is a lot more complex, and young people are exposed to a lot of things. I mean, I never got exposed to anywhere near what my kids got, you know, in terms of all the different influences in the world, some good, not so, and some not so good. So teachers have to deal with all that. That being said, we've tried to support teachers in a lot of ways. The contract, an atmosphere of a lot more respect for the teaching profession than bluntly, I think, was there in the previous 20 years. The, a great additional investment in teacher development, professional development. A lot of things that I've heard from a lot of teachers, they feel make the profession better. We also, for example, have focused on advancing the careers of teachers who want to become master teachers or want to become administrators, you know. In the previous administration, they kept wanting to go outside to corporate America to find the next assistant principals and principals. We said, no, we want our teaching corps to have an opportunity to rise up through the ladder. So I've heard that a lot of teachers feel that has been a much better environment. The evaluations, I mean, everybody in every line of work needs to be evaluated. What I would argue, I'm not going to go back and forth, I'm just going to do my best to answer it. What I think you're saying is, we don't want an evaluation system that is onerous, that is too much about high-stakes testing, that doesn't look at the profession, the creativity, all the things that go into the profession. I think we've already, in many, many ways, moved away from the previous evaluation approach to one that focuses on the broader talents of a teacher, and the state laws and all have changed. So the deputy chancellor's here, I don't know if I was anything to add, or did I cover it? I covered, I got an A from the deputy chancellor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, sir, you had your hand up first? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm a, I'm a social studies teacher, actually, here at the Gainham Account School. My wife's an ESL teacher at New Dorp High School, actually, I have some of my students in here now. So I just wanted to ask you about paid maternity leave. So in 2016, you introduced the paid maternity leave to the city, however, this vital benefit has not been extended to city employees who are under collective bargaining, which includes public school teachers. So as young homeowners and aspiring parents, you know, the prospect of family leave really kind of plays a large part in me and my wife determining whether we can start a family while keeping our home, you know, keeping everything stable, and I'm sure it's the same for lots of other young teachers like me and my wife. So I'm just asking, do you plan to extend paid maternity leave as part of upcoming UFT contract negotiations? And if so, how would this affect previously negotiated benefits?
Thank you for the question. Thank you, I think it's, it's a very big deal. It's something, I think, it makes a huge difference in people's lives. We said from the very beginning, it has to be subject to collective bargaining, the way it was structured, the way it was even structured for the managerial employees, it was the same thing, it had to come from other sources. And you'll remember, some people didn't agree with where we found the money in that case, but we thought it was the right thing to do. We have to do it through collective bargaining, the door is wide open to get it done through collective bargaining, there's obviously been some good discussions already. If the question is, are we committed to staying at the table with any union who wants it until we find a way? Of course we are, something I believe in philosophically. But I also want to be clear, we said from the beginning, it has to be achieved through collective bargaining, because that's the financial reality we're dealing with. It's a great benefit, if we can find the specific way for each union, that's the right way to pay for it, but those conversations will definitely continue. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Who did I get? Fern? I forgot, I broke my own rule.
Thank you for being here. I'm Fern Zager, I'm the CEO of the Staten Island Mental Health Society, we serve children and families, mental health, substance abuse, developmental disabilities, and Head Start programs. And I really want to applaud you for expanding the UPK to the three and four-year-olds, it's tremendously needed, but it has unanticipated consequences that I'd really like to discuss with you. Our Head Start programs are really at risk of being destroyed at this point. Specifically, the starting salaries for an ACS, master's-level teacher, with ACS working 12 months for the year is $51,000. The starting salary for a DOE-UPK teacher, working 10 months, is $54,000. Now, that's not a tremendous difference, okay? But as the years creep up, at the 20-year mark, the ACS teacher, master's-level teacher, is earning $54,000 for 12 months, while the UPK DOE teacher is earning $108,000 for 10 months. We can't keep our teachers. They are being siphoned off and going to the Department of Ed, and it's understandable, teachers that have worked with us for years.
Sure.
And we can attract new teachers, and the children are seeing, in the course of a year, tremendous turnover and inconsistency, which is really harmful to them.
So look, I, no, I'm very familiar with the issue. Couple of things, very quick. One, we're trying to close the gaps. We've already made some progress on closing that gap, and what you talked about, that in the early years, the gap is not too bad, that partly was because of actions we took to try and create more parity. There's big issues and complicated issues here, it's different unions, there are differences in the work, one thing or another, but the, but the point you're raising is very, very fair. What we're trying to achieve ultimately, because I think, I think at some point, this is in effect, all going to settle as this whole program gets built out, as all, you know, pre-K is now finally fully built out, 3K will be built out by September 2021. We then want to make sure, first of all, any, any organization that's already working with three-year-olds, of course, we're going to invite them to be part of 3K. And what's going to happen also, I think, is a lot of organizations will be doing some refocusing on younger-than-three-year-old, because there's a huge demand all over the city for childcare for younger kids as well. So all of this has to sort of be reworked, but I don't want to see a situation where there's the unintended consequence. We, I'm not going to say we're going to snap our fingers and everyone's going to have perfect parity and all, but it's just much more complex than that. I do want to make sure we're stabilizing the individual programs, I do want to make sure we're offering the maximum opportunity to participate, so they're financially strong with us, and I want to see how we can increase the supply of people coming into the field, because now we've become, as a city, a mecca for early childhood education. We want to get more and more people into the field. If we get a more ample supply of talent, it's going to help to also address that turnover problem. So we're going to, we're going to fire on all those cylinders, but I would love our folks to meet with you and see how we can learn from your experience, so we can improve that. Thank you.
Young man, blue shirt.
Good evening, Mayor de Blasio. I know that many small business owners are struggling in New York City, and this has not been addressed here tonight. In fact, I know that you've claimed that you've helped, wanted to reduce fines for small business owners, which you supposedly have. However, you have supported the implementation of this fine, and I feel that this fine is unfair.
I'm sorry, which fine?
I'm going to get into it.
Okay.
That this fine is, I feel this fine is unfair, unreasonable, unjust. It's a fine regarding transgender people that you cannot, if you call somebody "sir", like say, "Hi, sir, how are you?", but the person identifies as the other gender, a business can be fined as to $250,000, even if the owner makes the same mistake consistently. And I read that in the New York Post, by the way.
Well, don't believe everything you read in the New York Post.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I assure you of that fact.
You heard that, Yoff?
No, look, this is apples and oranges, if ever there was one. Here, on the first point, it is a fact, and the City Council knows it, and it's been well documented. The previous administration kept increasing small business fines, and bluntly, more in the outer boroughs than in Manhattan. I said from the beginning, we would come in, we would turn that around, it is now, in the last four years, the fines are down 40%, and we want to bring them down more. That is a fact, it's not supposed it, it's not alleged, it's a fact. Second, what you're talking about is part of human rights law, and we're not, a $250,000 fine is for a whole different class of violations, not that one, and for something that is a huge matter that goes on for years and doesn't get resolved and gets amplified, it's not that. I believe we have to respect the rights of all people, but the scenario you give, from my experience, that's just not a real scenario. If someone says something wrong verbally, they're not going to get a big fine, that's just my experience. We're not doing back and forth, I have answered the question.
We'll go to the gentleman also in the back with the brown jacket, and the glasses. One second.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for being the greatest mayor in the nation.
I like you already. I think you're a wise, insightful man. Insightful man.
Public official, thank you for your service, and New York City Police Department, thank you for making us safe. We are the greatest nation on earth, no doubt about that. One of the things, we give the Middle East a lot of money for assistance, is that, is there, is it possible we could use some of their money to educate those nations and tell them that we, we always there for them, we always helping them? Because some of these regimes and some of those countries blame us for all their problems. And we're not doing nothing about it, you know, I mean, we doing great fighting terrorism, we actually fighting terrorism, they own, you know, like in Iraq, Syria, all these countries. We even doing a great job here, especially in the New York City Police Department, but we giving them all this money, but can we use some of this money to educate those nations that their problem is, came from their regime?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Look, I mean, you're talking about the money the federal government spends in foreign aid, I'm always a little confused, that's a lot of money going to some places that confuse me sometimes, but I think your question is, can it be used in a way that encourages people to understand, we're friends of their people and the positive things this country does? Yeah, I think that's a good point, it could be, I think that could be done better. I think this country, because we are a freedom-loving country, because we're, we treat every people equally, that if more people around the world fully understood that, they would feel a lot better about the United States, and I think we could do a better job showing them that. But whether we're going to give it to a government and they're going to do that, I don't know if a lot of these foreign governments would actually do that with our money. I think the bigger question is, is our money better spent on that or better spent on educating people here? That would be the one question I'd have.
I think our friends in the Post are going to write, "De Blasio fields his first porn policy..."
Oh, really? That's, you're going to write the headline for them, right?
Ma'am, you had your hand up? Yep. I'll use this as an opportunity to sing, perhaps.
Pretty good at that.
Jerry, you have wonderful socks on, matched only by mine.
Those are, could you, sir, I'm sorry, could you turn down those socks? The glare is... Wait, yours, yours are sedate compared to those. Those are some socks, strong, man. I'm impressed. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you for being here tonight in Staten Island. My question is regarding the concerns regarding the wildlife situation, specifically the deer population in Staten Island. It's been an ongoing problem, I've been monitoring the situation, I've been in touch with the Humane Society, they actually tease me and tell me I should become a public advocate for the animals of Staten Island. But specifically, my concerns right now are regarding both the pedestrian situation. Friday night, I witnessed in my own neighborhood in Duncan Hills, as I was out walking the dog, a deer's family crossing the road. I actually stepped out in the middle of the street to deter two cars from almost colliding with the deer. What I believe should happen, and I have mentioned this to Brian Shapiro of the Humane Society, and he said I should address it with your office, is, and I actually reached out to council people as well, is that we should have in certain neighborhoods, especially where the green, or the green belts are, which is in my neighborhood, to have deer-crossing signs implemented. We need that desperately. I think it would definitely reduce the risk of accidents to both pedestrians, and being an animal lover...
Yep.
I wouldn't want to witness a deer being hit, that would be very traumatic to me.
No, thank you for the question. Look, I...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a big challenge for Staten Island, we're, we're trying with the overall strategy we're implementing, to bring down the population very intensely, but in a humane way. And we also have to do a lot more to protect people in terms of traffic and make sure people say, "Thank God, I've checked with NYPD, thank God, there have not been only more than a handful of incidents where there was any kind of injury in those situations", but we want to do a lot more to protect people. Commissioner, I know you're putting new signage in.
As part of, as part of the city's deer management plan, we have put up now 31 deer-crossing signs, some of the elected officials here were big champions of that. We also have variable message signs that we can move around, but if there are places where we're seeing a lot of them, we're happy to come take a look. Okay, we'll, we'll come talk to you about it.
All right, ma'am?
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Borelli.
Joe.
Joe. Mr. Mayor, you're the best. Thank you so much for pre-K and 3K upcoming. My daughter was the first one, that year she received it, now my son has, has full-time pre-K. I truly appreciate it. And my question is, can we please have school bus service for all elementary students? Because the gentleman in the corner was mentioning double parking, triple parking, blocking fire hydrants. I'm an environmental engineer working for MTN New York City Transit, and I believe not taking cars out, you know, so, I mean, and also, there are a lot of tickets going on for these double parking and all that, because my, my daughter's in second grade right now, and once she hits third grade, they don't provide school bus service. From third grade to fifth grade, there's no school bus service. But then my younger one will be in kindergarten, and he will have school bus service. So it just doesn't make sense for one to go on the school bus and one to be dropped off, or walked, you know? It's just, it's just so, doesn't make sense, and is it feasible to have school bus service till fifth grade?
Okay, so, let me, let me try, and the deputy chancellor's going to help me out, because I'm not a perfect expert on all the rationale around how things are done at each grade level. I can say this much, I think the basic design, deputy chancellor, I'll say it and you tell me what I get wrong here, the basic design has been around geography, that if you're very, very near a school, obviously, it doesn't make as much sense, and why would we incur the expense on behalf of the taxpayers and all that? But we have provided the elementary school level, school bus service, once people are a certain distance from the school, and that's the basic design, right? I think that system has worked. The question is, at this moment in history, would we, would we make it for people even closer to the school? I'm not sure that would make sense. So you're saying, you're saying there's a cutoff at third grade, which is not typical from my experience.
Fifth grade, but, but I'll talk to you about your specific schools, because one child shouldn't have it.
Street 31st, they cut off the second grade, so if we have a child in like first grade and then in fourth grade, one child gets it and the other.
Okay.
Okay, for the street, okay.
Okay, so that's a fair concern. So let me say, the broad point of would we increase it for people who live very close to a school, I'd say no. But on the specific point, if there's families within the same elementary school level, some are getting, some are not, that's a very fair question. So we're going to go back and look if we can make some changes on that.
I'll talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, who we got here? Who we got here? You guys got gym shirt on, you go to school here? All right, so we'll call you then.
Can you hear me? Oh, good. Hi, we're very glad that you were able to have this meeting in our gymnasium. We're both excited and a little apprehensive because we wanted to address a question that is sort of related to a question raised earlier. And we're not sure if this is exactly your expertise, but why?
There are very few things that are my expertise, so you, you know, it's just, just put it out there, we'll hope for the best.
So first off, I'm Cheyenne Watson, I'm a senior at CSI and...
Oh, I'm William Dannis, I'm a sophomore at CSI.
And we mainly want to ask, why is it so difficult for schools to obtain appeal monies from the DOE?
To appeal, to get, what kind of money?
Appeal monies, this comes out of...
Appeal money. Yeah, I'm, I lack expertise so much, I don't even know the phrase. What's appeal money, deputy chancellor?
The principal is sitting right in front of you, but it's appeal money when, when you put in your budget and sometimes the, the principal doesn't get the exact amount of money that they want and then they have to put in an appeal. So you have to, you have to really write to the Department of Ed and you have a meeting with our budget officers and we said we need X, X amount of money for certain things. And it's a process, because you get money based on fair student funding, which we talked about, it's not fair.
Let me, let me turn around just and ask you a different way. So that's about, every school understandably is going to ask for what they think makes sense. It's not shocking sometimes that the headquarters would say, you know, we like that idea, we don't like that idea, and then they have to appeal whatever. What is, what is the thing you're trying to achieve?
We're mainly addressing this because earlier in the school year, a little bit before this new school year started, there was an incident in which we were, we lost about three of our teachers, our, one of our foreign language programs and I...
So you're trying to get money to get that back?
We've been trying to, yes, but because of the appeals process, we haven't been able to gain that money or not enough of it to supplement that.
Deputy Chancellor, what can we do?
What we can do is we can go back and see how we can help you get some of those, I mean, I get those exact teachers back, but you shouldn't lose your subject areas.
Yeah, we weren't...
Because our funding is based on the number of students that are in the school. So if you lost enrollment for any reason, then your budget would have decreased, but you shouldn't have, if that's not the case, but we can talk about that and your principal should talk about it.
Deputy Chancellor will talk to you and to the principal as well. Yes, thank you for indicating the principle.
You just called him out.
Let's give them a round of applause for their good question.
And this is a great school, by the way, you know? We'll see what we can help you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, sir, the only one in this section with your hand up, okay. Lanza, you got a question too, Lanza?
Thank you for having me and once more congratulation, Mayor, for your reelection. And thank you to the NYPD, your life are always safe. Thank you for your work done. Sometimes in 2015, the former president actually extend, because Sierra Leone, Guinea, Liberia, we have Ebola, which a lot of life, and they lost a lot of life. And very recently in Sierra Leone, there was a big morse light. And a lot of people from those three countries benefited from the TPS.
Yes.
And the TPS is no more in existence and, but most of the people, based on their work authorization, they are working with some agents and some other offices, they have timeframe which they will ask them for their work authorization.
Okay, what's your question, sir?
So the question now is, what would your office do to make sure that, because these people are still contributing economically to the, the development of the city?
Yes.
So what can your office do to make sure that when this work authorization is being terminated and you can assist them to continue working?
I mean, I'll just say what you probably know from my public statements, I think it was a mistake for the federal government to cancel TPS, because I think it was, one, a recognition that the people were here, were here because of a crisis in their homelands. But honestly, as Americans, I think we should recognize these very same people were providing a lot of support to help their homelands get back on their feet. And again, I talked earlier today about my pride as the grandson of immigrants from Southern Italy, a part of the world, when my grandparents came here was very, very poor. And the fact that people came to America and sent resources back is what allowed their families back in Italy to survive in many cases. Well, TPS is a recognition that countries have gone through natural disasters like the earthquake in Haiti or epidemics like in Sierra Leone. By having people here who could send money back, we were helping to stabilize those countries and get them back on their feet. So I think a mistake's been made here. The City of New York, the Mayor's Office for Immigrant Affairs, we will work with anyone who needs help if they're trying to appeal their status or to help them get, you know, legal support wherever we can find it for them. Because certainly we know, as you said, also, these are people contribute a lot right here in our city now and are part of the fabric of our city. So we do want to find ways to help.
Thank you. Sir, you, you beat everyone in your section.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Councilmember Borelli.
You spoke about the veterans and how they should have more work. Well, as you know, the New York City Building Trades have, has a helmets to hard hat program and it's working extremely well. On Staten Island, there's a job going on right now in Highland Boulevard, it's called the Boulevard. It's over $125 million, okay? They have undocumented workers, they're making less than $15 an hour. All those spots could be fulfilled by guys that are veterans, women that are veterans and young, young adults. All right, there's another job that's going to come across your table tomorrow. It's the Galleria. Okay, so, so...
I'm not in this, brother, it's okay.
Okay, so there are many projects going on on Staten Island.
Yeah.
Our size constituents should be able to work here.
Yeah.
The unions, New York City, New York City Building Trades provide that, especially with the helmets to hard hats.
Yes.
Is there any, anything in your foresight that you would put together to have these out-of-state contractors come in and have some kind of reason for them to hire and sustain the New York?
Thank you, I got it.
Just not New York, but all the constituents.
I got it, I got it. Thank you, first of all, I really appreciate what you guys are doing with helmets to hard hats. Let's give them a round of applause for that. Look, during my administration, we've done project labor agreements, very big ones, like the housing authority, huge amount of work. So we worked with the building trades and it's been a mutually beneficial thing. We did it with Build It Back. I mean, these, you know, we had a lot of public money. We said we wanted to make it work with union labor. We wanted to get the job done right. We have really good experiences. But with private sector jobs, we do not, I don't know of any legal ability to mandate either that it has to be union labor or it has to be veterans hired. I'd love nothing more, I would be happy to see that happen, but we can't, I don't think, reach into the private sector in that way. I think the thing we can do is, again, you know, any veterans who are looking for opportunity, we're trying to maximize their opportunity with city government, first of all. By the way, I've been doing a lot of graduations for NYPD, FDNY, correction department, huge number of veterans going into our uniform services, which is fantastic for them, but fantastic especially for us. So we're going to try and do that with the public sector, or when we do a PLA, that's a place where I think we can have a big impact. With the private sector job, I think the best thing we can do is put pressure on them, all of us, the union, the government, everyone, to hire veterans and obviously to pay a decent wage while they're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir with the black shirt, that's you.
Thank you, sir. My name is Solomon, I serve in the US Army. I serve in the US Army, but now we, we have a lot of, we have a lot of veteran, we're trying to join NYPD or...
Like get up, get that...
We have a lot of veteran, we're trying to join NYPD or correctional officer like law enforcement, but...
Yeah, yeah.
But it's difficult for them to join. Like, I've been deployed to Afghanistan, I took the test 2012 ago, 2012, I took the NYPD test, I didn't, I didn't get caught yet and...
Well, I'd like you to speak to our Department of Veteran Services, because there's constant opportunities with the city in the different uniform services and also beyond. Tell me which branch of the service you were in.
US Army, sir.
US Army, and you were in Afghanistan?
Yeah.
Let's thank him for his service. So we're, let me just say, we're going to follow up with you specifically.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
I got out of US Army, I took the test, NYPD test, free, just one times. But I tried to take another test again, but due to like, or I, due to like, I don't have enough money, what can you do for us? Like, there are some kind of job, silly job, like, because there are some kind of silly job?
I got it, I got it.
Is that someone else?
I got, no, I do understand. We want to, and it's the same answer for you personally as the answer for everyone. If someone is...
But we have to pick...
Sir, sir, let me, let me finish the point, I want you to hear it. Anyone who's a veteran who's pursuing city employment, our Department of Veteran Services will literally help to facilitate them getting the different tests and if there's financial issues to help them address it. So they're going to follow up with you personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sir, Farrell shirt, I'm a C guy, I don't, I don't know, you could sit back down. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Hi, my name is Asher Abraham and I 10 months...
I thought he was going to be an impartial moderator.
Hi, my name is Asher Abraham and I 10 months senior Farrell High School. My question to you is, why is there no mandatory substance use curriculum in NYC schools? Nowadays, there's HIV AIDS education, but not for drugs. Why not?
Help, say it again, why is there mandatory?
Why is there no mandatory substance use curriculum in all NYC schools?
Okay, let me, let me turn to both the deputy commissioner and the health commissioner. Come on up. Because I do not know the nuances of our health curriculum. So for our high school students, for our high school students, the curriculum we give around health in general, does it have a substance abuse element?
It does, it should, it should be happening. I don't know why it's not happening in your school, but we could talk about that.
He's, he's in the Catholic school, but I'm talking about...
Our schools, we have it.
In the public schools, and so the question is, what, and it's a great question also, since DOE has larger oversight of all education in certain ways, and so does the state, do you know who governs over what the curriculum needs to be in a private or parochial school in terms of health education?
It's the state, but we can work with you with our superintendent.
Okay, so the public schools have it. If you want to talk about for your school, we can work with?
State Ed Department.
We'll follow up with you, thank you.
Coming to this one, Mike? I mean, guy, I don't know.
Thank you, Councilman Borelli, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to touch on what we were just talking about. My name is Michael Riley, I'm the president of Community Education Council 31 here in Staten Island. Borough President Otto has partnered with the police department and the Department of Education for Too Good For Drugs, of course, we, we know. We did a resolution in support of his efforts to get that K to 12. That is currently not available and like this student said just earlier, that it's, we have a mandated AIDS curriculum, health curriculum, but we do not have a substantial narcotics awareness, substance abuse. Along those lines, back in April 2016, public advocate James held an opioid, opioid awareness event and I suggested that we have school safety agents have naloxone. Since that, I've had many conversations with Chancellor Farina and the police department and they were going to evaluate protocols to make that happen possibly. So far, we've been at a stalemate, it hasn't happened. We're not asking necessarily that every school has to have one, but at least our middle schools and high schools. And if we do have the opportunity for a school safety agent to have that, maybe the level three, which is the supervisor, right, would have that as an experiment, just to, like, as a pilot. Would happen in the Bronx, not saying that Narcan would have saved them, we don't know, but it's a real concern and it would be a broad spectrum where we'd have Narcan and the education all working together.
First of all, thank you for all you do on the CEC, I appreciate that a lot. Let's give them a round of applause for that. So I want to thank the Borough President, because obviously Too Good For Drugs has been a very positive program. I know NYPD Chief Delator is huge proponent and we've provided some funding to support it here. The question, I want to combine the opioid piece with, you're making, I think, a good bigger point, first of all, substance abuse in general, which could also be alcohol, which is no small matter. So again, deputy chancellor and health commissioner, come back up, I want to just test this question, because I don't know the answer, so come help us out. If you broaden this, if you broaden the question to, we're teaching young people about the dangers, smoking, the whole thing, all of the different substances that could negatively affect their life, because I don't know the answers, I'd like something that would help everyone understand. In public schools, how early do we start that? How often do we repeat that over the grades? Do we have a sense of that?
So, so we do it in middle schools, definitely in high schools, not so much elementary schools, but we should and some schools do it. You're asking for mandatory curriculum on that and I appreciate that and that's something that the chancellor has been talking about and we do want to explore that further.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, we've got, oh wait, there's a protester who's coming, hold on.
With all, with all due respect?
Yes.
A high school student spends one semester of the eight semesters on health and that health class covers a myriad of issues, meaning they spend an hour, a day, less than an hour, specifically on opioids or addiction. Same thing with middle schoolers, one semester on health, it covers the whole universe.
Everything.
That's got to change.
Okay. By the way, can I just say, council member, I've rarely seen such restraint from Jimmy Otto. It took him, it took him most of an hour to finally break in on the meeting here.
I had to give him a non curse word dictionary.
That was very nice, yes, the, the Otto to English dictionary, right? So, okay, I think that's a point well taken right there. So I'm going to bring it together. So the answer is, middle school and high school, there's some, but not what you're talking about, not what the Borough President's talking about. I think it's a good thing that we put our minds together. I think it fits with the thrive idea also and pump up the substance abuse, smoking, et cetera piece of this. Borough President, will you have helpful suggestions to help us figure out how to do this? Okay, so that's point one. Now, stay here on, and chief, you may have perspective on this too. On the question of, do we have the Narcan or naloxone in schools, even just in the position, possession of school safety, do we have a standard for that, middle school or high school?
I don't think we do, but...
I don't think we do. We also, I, I would like to talk with you, because we, we aren't seeing fatal overdoses in this age group.
Thank God, but, but, I want to, I'll, I'll say it for you, I'll say it for you. We want to stay ahead of it and obviously, you know, everything costs money in the world, but to have the apparatus, to have the, the drug in the school, the reversal, right? To have the reversal drug, to have Narcan or naloxone is an appealing notion.
I'm Inspector Moskowitz from School Safety. This is something that has come up. It's something that I recognize your points and it, it, it's a possibility that it could save a life. We're discussing it seriously and I'll get in touch with you after the, after the meeting and stay in touch with you and let you know exactly where we're at with that.
I will wrap it all together. So it's a great idea. I'm not going to hold against you that Otto agrees with you. It's a great idea and what we'll do is this, we're starting the budget process right now, we'll be working with the council member. I want to combine these points. So I'm going to nominate into our own budget process that we put a price tag on middle school and high school, what it would mean to get, and obviously there'd be training, minimal, but still training, to make sure enough people at any given point in time knew how to do it. What would that cost us? What does that look like in terms of need? I'd argue high school most important, but second, the curriculum piece is a very powerful idea. What would it take? I don't know how much we control, we have a state issue, but whatever, let's, let's put as part of the budget process also, what would it mean to reorient our health curriculum, either to make this more of that semester or to add more time beyond that semester, because the world's changing rapidly and the opioid crisis, but not just that. The other substance abuse, the smoking, everything is a huge, huge challenge. So you're going to be a subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, I'm going here. Guy in the back, worst seat in the house, green jacket. I like watching these guys run too, so it's a lot of fun.
Sure, idea of fun, huh?
Thank you for listening to me. I have a small business and industry in New York City. We have been squeezed out little by little from developers. Luxury developers are making jobs disappear. I've moved to four different locations in 18 years. I'm moving into my fifth location. In the 15 to 18 years I've moved around, I would say I've had to get rid of between 60 and 70 high-paying union jobs. All those families...
What kind of work? What kind of work? Tell us, tell us what kind of business?
Uh, I would like, I don't want to.
You can, you can promote your businesses.
No, it's, um, I do heavy duty trucking for the motion picture industry.
Okay.
Uh, we provide a lot of tax revenue for the city of New York.
Yep.
We provide a lot of jobs for the city of New York. I think we surpassed the 1 million job mark last year.
Yes. What do you need?
Every time we go someplace to move, we are kicked out by developers because they're building $7,000, $8,000 a month, one bedroom apartments to satisfy their.
Okay. Can I ask you, because this is something both our Small Business Services Department, led by Commissioner Bishop here, but also our Economic Development Corporation can help. Can we work with you to find you a permanent location?
We've been trying. I've spoken to the MPAA.
Right, I'm saying us, the city. Can we work with you?
I've spoken to the mayor's office. I've spoken to the previous administration, as well as we've reached out to the new, the new.
Right, right.
And I've gotten a runaround.
Okay, we don't want to give you the run. I'm saying, would that, is, I'm just trying to make sure we can solve your problem.
Yes, there is property that you, the city has that is sitting down doing nothing, and you guys are not generating any revenue from that property.
And we'd be interested. Can I ask, from Economic Development Corporation and Small Business Services, will you follow up directly and see if we can find an appropriate location? Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Coming over here, sir, in the suit. Yep.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming to Staten Island. I have a community center that I've opened since 2013, and some of our elected officials have come there. We have very short means to run it, and we have been doing after school programs for our kids, weekend classes, so many activities. But our organization maybe has a connection with Islam, because it's Islamic Cultural Foundation of America. We've been trying to get funded for so many years, or even have a bigger location than where we at. But it looks like because of who we are, there is maybe lack response. We've never get funded, even though we've been helping.
For what type of, sir, for what type of thing are you trying to get funding? What type of service?
Um, we have, for example, me, I'm an, I used to be an athlete. I'm an athlete. I used to be a karate teacher.
Right. But what kind of service do you want to provide the community?
So we have, we have so many programs, like sports programs, like martial arts. I'm a martial arts teacher. We have also literary programs. We have, we help kids with their homeworks, after school programs.
Okay, so I've got you, I've got you. So in other words, you have youth programs.
Yes.
Tutoring, education, recreation, et cetera. Okay. So our Department of Youth and Community Development sponsors our after school programs, our summer youth employment, a whole host of things. And they are constantly talking to new organizations to see if they qualify for funding and what types of things they're doing, especially if they're someplace where the community's not being sufficiently served, we're open to providing funding. Now, with public funding, there's a whole host of rules, but it's not about, I mean, we work with Catholic charities, we work with Jewish organizations, we work with Muslim organizations all the time. So our, is our commissioner here? Commissioner Chong will follow up with you directly and see what we can do to help you qualify. Thank you.
I do want to say one thing that, thanks to the expansion that we did three years ago, we do have programs in Islamic schools. So we've done active outreach to the Muslim community, so I'd be happy to talk to you about.
So we have after school programs that, you know, that's a great example, even with Jewish schools, Catholic schools, Islamic schools are all part of our after school program. So follow up with the commissioner.
I'll talk to you afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Coming over here, pink.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Oh, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Joe.
Thank you.
What I want to address tonight is that in July, I witnessed a builder that has the property next to me poison a 50-year-old plus tree. I've been in contact with the Parks Department since July to try to hold this builder accountable. And nothing has happened. I've, some of the responses that I have gotten is that they found no evidence of poisoning. I actually have evidence.
This is, just so I understand, on public property or private property?
It's on, it's on private property, but it's a curb tree. So it's a city tree. It's a curb.
A city tree, so it's on the sidewalk.
It's on the sidewalk.
So it's a city tree. Okay.
Correct.
Parks Department. So if someone were trying to destroy a city tree, what do we do?
So we would, we would send an inspector out, which it sounds like we did. I'm not familiar with this issue.
But what would you do if someone had done something to destroy a city tree?
It doesn't sound like the tree was destroyed yet.
The tree is dead. The tree is dead.
I'm going to try again. Hold on. What would you do if someone tried or did succeed in destroying a city tree?
If we could prove it, we would absolutely issue summonses.
Okay.
That has yet to happen.
Okay.
The parks, what I've been, what I've gotten is that they found no evidence of poisoning. They found no evidence of a hole drilled in the tree, which was injected poison.
So we'll do it, so you got the point across to me. I want us to go back and you personally attend to this, and let's go reinvestigate it. Okay, we'll follow up. Thank you.
The woman holding your face, I don't know why you were looking at me like this, but it convinced me to call on you.
Joe, people do that, would you? They do that.
It was a great way to get my attention.
Hi, thank you. I would like to pass the mic to my friends. We represent the woman who march.
Thanks, Soita. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for coming to Staten Island. And I just want to say, I'm never going to get this opportunity again. Thank you for the way you handled the last incident and the incidents before. You made them insignificant. You made me feel safe. So thank you. Mr. Mayor, I've, I live on, in the north shore of Staten Island. I moved here for Brooklyn 15 years ago, and I came here to raise my family, and I love Staten Island. It's the most unique neighborhood, borough, city in the world. It's the best city in the world. And we have a very diverse population here on Staten Island, as you know. But lately, it's been a little bit scary. My issue is about immigration and what's been happening with some of the unjust treatment by ICE officers all over the island. If you talk to community groups, if you understand what's really happening, you'll really learn. And there's a lot of misinformation going on from some of our congressmen, our residents. And we represent a small group that try to help some of these people that have been unjustly affected by President Trump's mandates. My question is, we are a sanctuary city. You are, as this gentleman said, the mayor of the greatest city in the world. What does it mean to be that? And, and we can't do it on our own. We're a small group of women who feel a lot of empathy and sympathy for some of the families that have been disrupted here on Staten Island.
Got it. Thank you so much. Thank you for your concern. All right. I want to talk about the federal level and the city level. So the federal level, I had this conversation directly with General Kelly when he was the Homeland Security Secretary. Obviously now he's chief of staff in the White House. And I know Commissioner O'Neill had it as well. We tried to explain, in fact, even before he took office with the president-elect, I had the conversation, to say, New York City, for decades, under my predecessors, including under Mayor Giuliani, so it doesn't matter if you're Democrat or Republican, made the decision, and the NYPD felt this strongly, that we needed to have an open relationship with all immigrant communities. Number one definition, I would say, of what we do is we protect all communities and we do not ask documentation status. That's the simplest definition of what we do. And that we came to the conclusion that to protect eight and a half million people, you could not have a disconnect in the relationship between police and immigrant communities. And if that were to happen, God forbid, you would have people stop reporting crimes, stop being witnesses, formal witnesses to crime, if they felt they could be deported or their family could be deported. It's just, of course, would poison the well and the whole relationship with law enforcement. Which is why Commissioner O'Neill's been very clear on this point, and police commissioners all over the country have said, they're not going to change that. This is about protecting everyone. We're not changing that. So I had this conversation with the president-elect, with General Kelly. Commissioner O'Neill's spoken out all over the country about this. And that's the number one definition. But further, of course, we've done things that we think show respect for everyone regardless of documentation status, because everyone's part of our community, and we should, I think as a country, stop pretending otherwise. Half a million undocumented people here, almost 12 million undocumented people in the country, all part and parcel of the life of this nation at this point. So we provide ID NYC to everyone, whether you're documented or undocumented. We provide legal support if, God forbid, any family is facing deportation. We also think one of the worst of all worlds would be to have the family breadwinner deported and the children left behind, right? Which is horrible for everyone. I know it's, I know it happens, and we provide legal support to try and stop that from happening. That's what we can do. We do not have the power to tell ICE they can't be in New York City, they're the federal government. We do have the power to say, you can't just walk onto the grounds of a school, for example. We don't allow that. But I think we've tried to strike a balance. We're of course respectful of the federal government, but we've also tried to say, we have to live by the values of our own city and, and the needs of our own people, and we set those ground rules. And I think bluntly, regardless of the bluster, I, I've never heard anyone serious in the federal government ever say to me that it was, that they disrespected the police leaders who were saying this had to be the policy. There's never been a response that said, if the police commissioner in New York City and the police chief of Los Angeles won't change their policy, somehow they're wrong. So we're sticking with the policy we have.
Coming over here, sir, bald. I'm, I'm getting there too, you know.
Is this on? Good evening, Mayor. I live on the south shore of Staten Island in a town called Annadale.
Don't not vote for me now, please. I live in Annadale. Don't come to my house and yell at me. I'm sorry.
My wife has spoken to you. The reason why I want to talk to you is about Vision Zero. I know it's one of your accomplishments that you like to, you know, speak about. Arden Avenue is a main road. It's only two lanes that runs from basically the West Shore Expressway to Highland Boulevard. It's a truck route, which I understand through earlier this evening, we need them, but it seems like it's the only one. There's no on and off ramps from, like I say, Forster, from the south shore down towards Richmond Ave. So all the traffic just seems to flow onto Arden Avenue. Challenge is, a good portion of Arden Avenue doesn't have sidewalks. So it's extremely, extremely unsafe for pedestrians. You know, we have young children, my neighbors, myself, we literally cannot walk in the street. So, and so we haven't seen an impact on Vision Zero in our neighborhood. Let alone, you know, speed cameras and stuff near the schools, we don't have any of this. But it's not even safe to literally cross from one side of Arden to the other. There's no streetlights on most of Arden Avenue on long stretches, which causes other problems. But so what is happening, a ton of traffic is pouring into our side streets, Carlton Boulevard, all these things, and they're like highways. And you literally cannot cross the street to say hello to a neighbor, because, I mean, you have to look both ways seven times. And it's not fair that we can't enjoy our own communities, walk to the public schools rather than drive a kid that's two blocks away, because you can't walk.
Okay. No, I'm hearing you loud and clear. So let me, let me start with the question to the commissioner about the formal truck routes and all. This, this worries me on many levels, starting with the absence of the sidewalks. I want to talk about that too. But in terms of, if it's a truck route and there are not sidewalks, and there are people who need to use it to move around, that sound, that does sound like a troubling combination.
It's, we know the road, and it is an area where we've done a bit of sidewalk work. It's a challenge in Staten on a lot of roads we're built here without sidewalks.
Right.
And the city has come in, working with some of the elected officials and put them in in some places, and we're going to continue that work. It, it takes time and money to do so. You know, and again, if there are places where you think we need crossings happen to come, you know, we'll send our engineers out.
But, but just let me, let me, first question earned, and then I want you to see if you have any clarification. The, but a truck route, it's one thing to say there weren't sidewalks originally, et cetera, which I understand, but a truck route without sidewalks, if there's a lot of people around, that to me worries me in terms of the, the potential danger and where we should therefore have to prioritize. So is this, you know, do, is one, what kind of truck route is it? And is it typical that if it's a truck route, it wouldn't have sidewalks?
Right, no, I mean, I think it's not, it's not typical throughout the city. Again, here in Staten Island, you have, you know, a larger proportion of roads that don't have sidewalks. And the city, again, we have built out some of those sidewalks. There is much more to be done. And obviously, where you're having a truck route with people crossing, it's not a place where we don't want to have sidewalks. So we've done some work there, but I think there is more to.
Let's do this, because again, the budget process is about to begin. This combination where, where there's not sidewalks, but there is a truck route worries me. Can we get a proposal from your team? Maybe it's not the whole thing, as you said, maybe it's some particularly sensitive areas that need it. But I'd like a proposal so we can see what it would take to start addressing this.
Yep.
Okay? Thank you. We'll follow up on that.
I come here, the only person raising hand, yep.
Hi, welcome to Staten Island. I'm a single parent raising a physically disabled minor. As you know, families raising disabled minors are, can be impacted financially by job loss, income loss to raise a minor with a disability. We are struggling to find an affordable and accessible apartment in all of New York City.
Yep.
I would like to know what your plans are in the future to support that.
Thank you for the question. So very important thing to know, and I think the vast majority of people don't know it. The Affordable Housing Initiative across the board has a preference, a dedicated preference for folks with disabilities. So if one member of the family has disabilities, that's an important factor in giving you a better chance of getting an affordable apartment. That initiative now will be grand total 300,000 apartments, between new built apartments and keeping people in the apartments they have with a subsidy. So there's a lot of opportunity there. We have people who can literally walk you through the application process and make sure that you're maximizing your chance of succeeding. And there may be also very specific things you can apply for in terms of housing that's built for folks with disability. But in general, it is something that actually gives people more chance of winning the lottery, and a lot of people don't even know it. So first, who's here from HPD? Anyone from HPD? There you are. Vito, excellent. Vito Mostichello will follow up with you on that and help you make sure you get your application in.
All right, coming here, calling you. Beautiful yellow scarf.
Thank you. It's a little chilly.
Good evening. My name is Tanisha Franks. I'm the co-founder of Occupy the Block Staten Island and Mothers Against Senseless Killing Staten Island. And the last town hall, you were gracious enough to provide us with an answer with some of the things that the city is doing to kind of level the playing field for communities where there's disparities and there have been some dysfunction that has been a result of some of the systematic racism and the passing down of things that we all currently are dealing with. And I have actually had the benefit, so basically it was a lot of the stuff that you've already spoken about, like the neighborhood policing and the sector officers and the NCOs and the pre-K and community schools. So I actually had the benefit of being with Borough President James Otto and the district attorney and going to visit the Red Hook Community Justice Center. It is a phenomenal, 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 phenomenal community justice system. And so what I actually am asking, with your commitment to the reform of the criminal justice system. What do you think the role is of community justice systems like we have in Red Hook? And what is the likelihood that that will appear on Staten Island?
Thank you for the question. Thank you for the question, great question, great question. So Judge Kyle Brazy, who is the driving force behind the Red Hook Justice Center, who is an amazing leader and really has created something that's become a model all over the city and far beyond. And I've talked to him directly about this many times. This, this is amazing at a community level. You turn lives around, you get, particularly with young people, you get them off the wrong track, get them on the right track. It really is amazing. I believe in it as a model. I'm happy to work with the Borough President. If that's something that would help on Staten Island, that would instantly be a priority for me. So you like it, I like it.
All right, coming over here. Ma'am in the white sweater.
Good evening. During Hurricane Sandy, Graniteville was not flooded because we have, even though the FEMA maps indicated that this is a flood prone area, because we have a tidal wetland and we have a wetland forest. We're in danger of losing that wetland forest, 2,000 trees, an area that saved us from flooding because a big box store is coming in and it's going to destabilize this environmental justice area. The big box store is going to put all of the small businesses on Forest Avenue out of business. The small businesses circulate their profits in the neighborhood. The big box stores take their profits out of the neighborhood. So we're in danger of a lot of things. We're going to have to pay flood insurance. That's going to destabilize the neighborhood because people struggle financially there. We're going to, we're in danger of being flooded.
Okay, I got you.
What can we do? Isn't it better to make this a green belt or a park than, than having a neighborhood, which is an environmental justice area destroyed?
Thank you, thank you for the question. Councilman, councilman, obviously you know, in anticipation meeting, we went over a lot of different things with you, your staff, etc. This is not a topic I actually am familiar with, so help me out here.
It's actually not in my district.
That would be why, I'm not familiar with it, okay.
It was an As of Right Zone project, I believe, right Lynn?
Actually, Mr.
Please, yeah.
This was a project that was actually approved, actually went through the full ULP process, approved by city council just a couple of months ago.
Which district?
Debbie Rose.
Debbie Rose, okay.
And actually, we actually met prior to that approval. City planning actually met with homeowners associations across the street that are actually located in the flood area, met in my office and discussed the flooding concerns. And we offered to actually come out and meet at the homeowners association's upcoming meetings and walk them through what, where the flood, flood maps are actually located, where, how flood insurance actually works, and give them some assistance, answer questions about flood insurance. We're happy to come out there and have a meeting and offer that.
But I just want to ask for my clarification. If it's As of Right development, that's one thing. But, but I heard As of Right and then I heard ULPs, I want to understand that. Which?
It was not in As of Right.
It was ULP.
Correct.
My mistake, yeah, totally.
Okay, okay, you know, I hear, that's what I get for listening to you. Okay, it was a ULP process. And, but the environmental question, I, I share her concern about the big box stores. But in terms of the economic impact. But on the environmental question and any additional vulnerability in terms of resiliency, how was that issue treated in the ULP process?
The project actually went through a full environmental review, had an actual EIS, not a short-lived EAS. And it was actually reviewed by the Department of Environmental Conservation, the state DEC. They actually signed off all of, there was no development located in the flood zone itself. It was all up in the upland area. It wasn't an area that had trees, which was a community concern about it. But it actually went through and the developer actually made a valid case to the city council and city council approved a project that's going to actually bring economic development to the North Shore with a lot of improvements to the existing wetland area.
Okay, thank you, thank you, okay. Ma'am, we're not going back and forth. I heard your concern. He may be wrong, but obviously it already happened, so we have to deal with it.
Coming to this section, sir with the vest.
How does EDC set the?
Microphone.
Just out of curiosity, how does EDC set the wage standard on say, a construction project that's under their control?
EDC, I'm not familiar with how they specifically set per, how do you do it for each project? How do you, is there a sense of how you do that?
The controller sets.
The controller sets it? Yeah, okay, Controller's Office.
But happy to follow up with you.
That was a great question, though, it was to the point, I appreciate it. Pink shirt, please.
Thank you for being here and thank you for hosting us tonight. Mr. Burley, my name's Rose, I'm with Transportation Alternatives. As I'm sure you know, Mr. Mayor, Highland Boulevard was named as a Vision Zero Priority Corridor by the DOT in 2015, making it one of a handful of streets in Staten Island that account for 40% of pedestrian traffic fatalities here. It is also among the most dangerous streets in New York City in terms of traffic fatalities per capita. When will you take bold action, like you did on Queens Boulevard, to turn Highland Boulevard into a street that is dangerous for motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists into a street that's made for people?
Thank you for the question. Before I turn to the Commissioner and the Inspector, the, look, Vision Zero continues to build, that's the bottom line. We're going all over the city where, with a lot more enforcement, with a lot more changes to traffic design. This is constantly going to grow. The only area where we're stymied is the part that depends on Albany. I know you're quite familiar with, and we are going to fight that fight again, and we need your help to fight for additional speed cameras around schools. But in terms of constant improvements physically and more enforcement, NYPD is constantly increasing on speeding failure to yield. So let's talk about Highland Boulevard.
Sure.
Hold on, let's let them answer.
So Highland Boulevard is, we're up in enforcement 35% this year. We have a total of over 9,000 summonses written. Eighty-eight hundred of them are hazardous enforcement summonses. So we took two fatalities this year. One was a pedestrian. It was the fault of the pedestrian. And the other one was a collision, a low-impact elderly victim. Again, 2015 was not a good year for us. With the help of the DOT, we made some changes along Highland Boulevard with their recommendations. And again, the enforcement is there.
So I'll just add to that, hi Rose, good to see you. Tom, which is reminding me, so Highland Boulevard, it is, as we've done Vision Zero, it's unfortunately a street where we've seen, you know, I think it was 2015 fatality, we had eight fatalities. NYPD and DOT went out there, we did, I was actually with Transportation Chief Chan, we did a bunch of education and enforcement. We did some redesign work, I think probably not what you were looking for, Rose, but putting up fencing, better crossing, signal timing. And we did a bunch of things there, and we saw fatalities, 2015 were four, last year were eight. Last year were four, this year so far, two. So we're seeing some progress in terms of safety. I know there's more we can do there. It is, as you know, a very, very challenging street. It is probably the most fiercely contested piece of roadway real estate in Staten Island. So, you know, we've done some changes and I'm sure we'll come back over time and do some more. But at least I think our joint efforts have helped see those fatality rates go down.
But let me, let me press the question, what's next? We're going to keep amping up enforcement as needed. And my message to NYPD, and I've had the conversation with Commissioner O'Neill many times, is keep going on enforcement to keep driving down the fatalities. Speeding, failure to yield, citywide, more enforcement anywhere we need it. But on the physical, do we have some next steps in vision?
Right, I mean, on physical changes, again, we've done some fencing and enhanced some of the crossing areas. There is a real challenging trade-off in putting in some of the infrastructure we need for crossing areas and making sure we can keep traffic and the buses flowing. It's a major bus route through Staten Island. But I think next phase is to do more of those intersection improvements for pedestrians.
Thank you. All right, coming back here. CB3 Chairman Frank Morano has a question.
Ms. Mayor, I just want to make one point, actually. The gentleman behind me spoke about, you know, traffic on Arden Avenue with the bus route, and also brought about Highland Boulevard. We have a lot of parkland along that, those routes. And parks does not like to make sidewalks. And what they do is then people are forced to be out in the street in the traffic. And I think that is one policy that maybe you should consider changing.
Yeah, there's no question, look, the, I appreciate this point because it frustrates me too. And as a pedestrian, but especially in my years as a father of young children, that kind of thing would drive me crazy. I think the point that before we all came onto the scene, things were built without sidewalks, now we have to catch up. I think the question becomes, if that's where we're going to put our money, it might be a very, very smart use of our money. It will mean other things won't happen. We talked about the great park that was unveiled today and a lot of other things that have cost a lot of money that people absolutely want. If we're going to focus on sidewalks, we're not going to be able to do some other things. But that being said, I think we should start mixing it into lineup more, for sure. Especially if it's a place that's particularly vulnerable. I mean, I think that's the common sense thing to me to begin. Where are the biggest safety problems of lack of sidewalks? Focus on there. Over time, try and keep going, keep going, keep going.
Thank you. This section, anybody? You got one already. Sir. Mr. Dezzo, good to see you.
Mr. Mayor, okay, welcome to Staten Island.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, just an opinion by you, not even a question, just an opinion if it's okay. I'm an educator at Staten Island Tech, who did come out of retirement, and I am working in a wonderful, wonderful high school. And I just asked a question. I used to be a tradesman, a blue collar trade, in local 28, the She Metal Union. And there's a lot of effort by some of the teachers and a lot of not-too-affairable opinions by the administrators, no offense to people, that try and bring back the vocational schools and bring back the trades like we had when I was his age. You know, I just, I can only say, and maybe in your opinion, there is Chancellor Perina knows about this.
Sure.
I'm always a believer in hands-on education. I have special projects on my own, which I promised Mr. Burley I wouldn't talk about. But bringing back vocational schools, how do you feel about that, sir?
I love it. So when I went to high school, vocational school had become, unfortunately, a negative term to too many people. And that was wrong to begin with. But now what's happened, there was a rebranding, to say the least, but more importantly, a strategic change. Career and technical education today is a growing area in the public schools. I was with Michael Mulgrew yesterday, who was a career and technical education teacher, when he was a teacher. And he said he had just come back from a national conference, and people all over the country came up to him and said, "How can we do what New York's doing?" Because New York is continuing to build out our career and technical education programs. I think we have 120,000 students now who are in them, in our schools, in our high schools. And there are more and more high schools that have a specific industry that they're connected to, whether, and some is more traditional skills and some is more the kinds of skills that are gaining ground in the, in the economy. So film and TV, life sciences, tech, healthcare. But you also have, of course, you have aviation. You've got plenty of schools that reflect important careers that we need a lot of people for today as well. So this is a growing area, a successful area, an area more and more kids want. Not just kids who say, "I want to do it, it's the only thing I want to do." Some kids want to do it as part of their education, even if they take, you know, an academic focus as well. So the answer is yes, I'm very personally committed. The Chancellor is very personally committed. We thought it never should have been downgraded to begin with. And the modern version of it is making a big comeback in this city.
Thank you. Ma'am, blue jacket.
I'm glad to see that our.
Microphone, please.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is much better. I'm glad to see that our state officials are here as well, representatives. Malia Otakas, Lanza, everybody. And I'd like to know when we're going to have some reform on our real estate taxes so that it makes real taxes, taxes more fair. People are paying.
Yeah, this is a question earlier, and I want to just say it again very simply. I'm going to put together a comprehensive effort. We're going to go back to the state legislature and the city council and ask them to pass a reform package. That effort's going to begin early in the new year. It's going to be a big, complex matter. It will ultimately take legislation, so there'll be hearings, there'll be plenty of chance for people to weigh in. Current system's unacceptable to me. We will have a new system, if I have anything to say about it. But in the end, again, it will have to produce roughly the same revenue, but I think we can do it in a much fairer way.
Thank you. Ma'am with the glasses, gray shirt.
Good evening and thank you for coming to Staten Island. I'm a North Shore resident. I live on Richmond Terrace. I have a tour operator company. And very importantly, the North Shore corridor along Bay Street and Richmond Terrace is a nightmare. And I'm sure our Borough President agrees with me 100%. Millions of dollars were spent by the MTA to conduct a survey about how to bring back a better mass transit system along Richmond Terrace. And I know the Borough President has petitioned the MTA about this BRT, and we get no answers. With the opening of the Empire Outlets, Lighthouse Point, and eventually the Ferris Wheel, I see pandemonium. And something has to be addressed because we're going to have not only ferry, the ferries coming in, but there will be increased cars. How is that going to help those of us who do live on the North Shore?
Thank you for the question. Start, thank you very much, I want to start with, in addition to the previous conversation about the ferries, there's also the separate conversation about ferry service that could be connected to the new development. And that's its own topic that I know is still being discussed. That might be another thing that provides some relief. But on the question of Bus Rapid Transit or Select Bus Service, we believe in it. We announced that there will be an expansion in all five boroughs, and the Commissioner will talk about the next steps.
Right, and the, and the MTA study, it is still underway. A couple of years ago, when the mayor put in a new capital contribution to the MTA, that was one of the things the MTA agreed to do. It is underway. I know it's frustrating that it isn't done yet, but we have been keeping up to date with them on it and prodding them to come up with those results as soon as we can. And as the mayor said, we're looking also at the Borough President's behest at a study looking at potential other ferry routes to other, from the Staten Island ferry to other potential destinations in Manhattan.
In terms of the specific developments that you were referring to, I'm happy to touch base with you on some plans for mitigating that as well.
All right, so we are in the 15-minute warning, so we're going to go to sort of the lightning round, so you can keep your questions quick, that would be appreciated. Sir, I'll go to you.
Fine, and thank you so much, Mr. Joe, for allowing me to speak. Welcome, Mr. Mayor. My name is Sidikistavadogo, and I'm a community outreach and recruitment agent for.
Okay, he said, quick questions, everyone, 15 minutes left, what's your quick question?
So actually, it's not even a question, I'm just here to spread the word. So I do some outreach services. We serve youth under Young Men Initiative. So I'm here to say that we do provide mentoring opportunity for youth. I'm a, I'm a point person for North Shore, you know, for Staten Island. I would be happy to help.
Thanks so much.
All right, coming here, question, sir.
Yes, sir.
We run a snow shoveling for seniors program here on Staten Island.
Excellent.
And we have over 3,000 seniors who are requesting the service.
Yes.
And we have a very difficult time getting students to volunteer, even though we give them community service. And I've been trying to get the Department of Education to make this one of their priority, you know, student service opportunities.
I like it.
If we get one person in each school, we could get a lot more volunteers.
Excellent. Is the superintendent here tonight? Okay, so you and, we'll follow up right after the meeting to see if we can get that done. That's a great idea. Thank you for what you're doing.
Coming here, ma'am, right there.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you for being here. My question is, there has been rumor that the new Brighton Jersey Street housing is going to be sold to private developers.
That what's going to be sold, I'm sorry?
The new Brighton Jersey Street NYCHA houses.
No, no NYCHA development's going to be sold to developers, period.
Okay, because that is the rumor that is going around.
Yeah. We, we, can I just say, because it's everywhere, this kind of rumor. You don't, I don't believe in privatization. All NYCHA property remains under our control. None of our NYCHA buildings that have tenants in them are going anywhere, or residents in them are going anywhere. There are some developments where we believe there's unutilized land that we can build something on, but we're still retaining control. All existing buildings with residents in them are 100% safe for the long term. We do not believe in privatization.
Thank you.
Thank you. Coming here, ma'am, green.
There's the wonderful Blue Belt Program. South Shore has gotten a lot of Blue Belts. North Shore has been left out of the Blue Belt Program. Why is it that areas like Graniteville cannot have participation in this wonderful, world-renowned program?
So this is the Blue Belt Program where we're building out natural drainage systems to help move water rather than building traditional sewers. The South Shore, we focused on because they didn't have any sewers at all. So that was the focus. But we are expanding and moving northward. We've done some Mid-Island Blue Belts, and we're moving further north.
Thank you. Coming here, anybody, anybody?
Thank you. I have a son in the Marines, and I have a son who's a ballet dancer. So I feel like I have a unique perspective on how little parenting.
That's the all-American family right there.
As both of them will be returning home pretty much at the same time. My son's in the Mideast right now, my other son's just started upstate. What do you envision the Staten Island that they're going to come home to?
I appreciate the question. Look, I am, first of all, an optimist by nature, and I don't mean that to be, you know, spin. I really feel it. Staten Island is becoming stronger, I think, economically. One of the things I'm very proud of, we said from the beginning, I wanted to end the sort of focus on job creation in Manhattan only and think about an economy that's all five boroughs. We see now, and I want to credit the Borough President, and he's been pretty obsessed on this, we see the kinds of industries that are growing in the city coming to Staten Island, film and TV, you know, tech. You see all sorts of things starting to develop in Staten Island that speak to a long-term diverse economy. You're seeing people, not only of every background, but a lot of very talented people, creative people wanting to come here. I think it really suggests something very good about the future. Now, the underlying problems, I don't miss for a moment. The congestion problem, the development challenges, this is real stuff. development challenges, this is real stuff. And we got to do, we got to find solutions where I'm hopeful we can get something done on select bus service and other things. Ultimately, again, I'm sympathetic on ferries, we got to figure out where we're going citywide. But I'm, I feel good about the future, because it's an incredibly safe community, incredibly safe, with a stronger economy, and I think it's a pretty harmonious community, and a good place to live. So I, that's my, that's what I think your sons will be returning to.
Thank you. Coming, ma'am in the back, or sir, I couldn't tell, I'm sorry.
Hi, thank you for coming to Staten Island. We are residents of the neighborhood here, and I work in a building right across the street, and we have some bedridden people in the house. And the people at, in this school, they're great, but they don't, the parents come here day and night. Nighttime, I can't even come here between 6:00 and 10:00 at night, and these people need to be taken care of, and they need to have the health aides come into the home. And you can't come here, it's a disaster, the people are disrespectful, they're parked in front of fire hydrants, they're double parked, they're triple parked, day and night. There's a street here called Daniella Court, that's a private street, that I've gotten a note on my car saying that I'm not allowed to park there, because they will report it and have my car towed. This is a private street with a couple of houses, I'm there for maybe four or five hours a night, and I can't park there because they say it's their street. I'm a taxpayer, and I feel that there's no reason why that should be privatized, especially when they come home at night, and you can see they have little tags on their mirrors that say Danielle Court, and they're all parked on Essex Drive.
Okay.
And now, all of these people that live here can't park. Now, plus, the school functions are day, all night long, they have dances, they have...
No, I got it, and it's creating a challenge.
It's not even a challenge, it's impossible to live here.
Okay.
And when the houses, when the school was built, they said there would not be an entrance on Essex Drive, the entrance would be elsewhere. And they lied, they made the entrance right here. There's no reason why they can't have these people park in the Park and Ride parking lot on Marsh, and keep it away from this residential area where it's making an impact on people's lives.
Okay, so let's get the precinct involved here. What can we do, step forward, what can we do to work with her and her neighbors, with the school, to see if we can reorient, if people are coming here for activities, get them to park in a way that's more respectful to the surrounding community, and address the concerns about the private area? Give us a sense of how you can follow up on this.
Well, I'll follow up with you personally, but working with the schools itself, the principals, and reaching out to the parents and the PTAs, telling people to be more accommodating to the communities, one step we've been taking. We are sending officers around on a periodic basis to address some of these double parkings and some cell phone issues. We can commit to it a little more in the future to see more enforcement, and the public...
Will you, Inspector, will you, will you go and meet with her on her block and see the situation and address it directly?
Absolutely.
He will come and meet with you directly on your block, okay?
Sir, I insulted you before, I have to give you a second question.
One question, business-related, I'm a small business owner also, here in New York...
He looks exactly like the guy who asked the question before.
It's relating to action overlay laws, it affects our insurance premiums. It's only here in, like, New York City and a few other places where a contractor who's been on a job, finished a job, can be pulled into a lawsuit down the road, even if he's off the project. Action overlay laws, not many, and it's part of why our liability premiums are so high, and why everyone pays so much for renovations and stuff like that. Are you guys familiar with action overlay laws, and why is New York City one of the still remaining cities that have these laws on the books? It may be a state question, I'm not sure, but...
Yeah, I don't know that city or state, I'm looking to our state experts. Ring a bell? Okay, you've stumped the stars here, I don't know that one.
I blame Cusack. It's a question about business insurance.
It's about liability insurance for construction companies.
Liability...
Big and small.
Liability for construction companies, is that, do you think, you guys or the city? State? Will you, who, where do you live?
Staten Island, Annandale.
Annandale? Who's got Annandale? Senator, will you kindly look into this issue?
Are you familiar with action overlay issues?
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Coming here, wait, I skipped you, you asked one, yeah, fine, one more.
Hold on, hold on, we gave mixed message, I thought you were going that way. Hold on, we'll come right to you, hang on one second.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
One, then two, hold on, we're almost done here, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just really briefly, if the new tax bill passes in Washington...
Yes.
Can we expect state and local taxes to decrease as a result of stall deductions that are...
No, the, and I want to tell you on the outset, again, this doesn't matter which party you're in, I want to really express appreciation for what Congressman Donovan has done on this issue, because...
He voted no on.
He voted no, and he said this is going to be double taxation for his constituents, and he's right. It's horrible for 100 million Americans, right now, deduct their state and local taxes and property taxes, 100 million people, and it is a law that's been on the books in the United States since 1913, and it's about to be eliminated.
That's true.
It's horrible for, it's horrible for New York City, it's horrible for New York State, it's horrible for a lot of places. So I think there's still time to stop it. We're certainly, I'm working with Democratic and Republican mayors to stop it, but would it result in double taxation for middle-class and working-class New Yorkers? Absolutely, and that's a tragedy.
Thank you.
Ma'am, coming back to you, sorry.
And we have five minutes left?
Just another five minutes, because I've, with a whole hour. I want to say thank you for coming to my neighborhood tonight, and I also want to say thank you to the family of CSI. I hope you will put more money into CSI High School, because the African kids are graduating from here with all the challenges that they have. CSI is a global high school. My question to you is, is very sensitive, and I know it will make us feel uncomfortable, is the racial disparity. There is a racial disparity on Staten Island. I wrote Commissioner O'Neill, fortunately for the African community, he put a task force together, and I also want to commend the captain of the 120, and the commander of the 120, they reached out to the African community, and we're putting our demand together in terms of addressing the racial disparity on Staten Island. It is, it is a national issue, it's uncomfortable stuff for us to talk about. The opium overdose today, and the criminal justice system, all of it is contributing to the racial disparity that we have on the national...
Okay.
However...
Go give me a specific...
Maybe I want one minute, that I want your office...
Listen, listen, everyone, I've asked everyone to follow the same rule, bring up your specific concern.
The specific concern I want is, I'm appealing to you, the task forces that the 120 has, when we put our demand together, they be inclusive, so it can be a pilot project on Staten Island in terms of us addressing the racial disparity.
Thank you. Look, I'm glad, thank you very much, and I'm glad there is effort going on with NYPD and community leaders to determine the right course of action, and I know if there's a task force working with the community, of course, we're going to follow up on the results of that task force. So everyone takes it very seriously, and thank you for raising it. Time for one or two more.
Two more, two more, sir in the red shirt.
Hello.
Just saw you today.
Yes.
I know what you're going to ask. This is a good one, this is a good issue.
There's a Vision Zero issue, there's a crossing against Richmond Avenue and Forest Hill Road, the pedestrians have to cross eight lanes on Richmond Avenue, and when there's a green light for the pedestrians, also a green light for the cars turning on Forest Hill Road. DOT has given a study in March, I believe, of 2016, found it wasn't warranted, not enough crossing. This is a summer crossing, basically, it's a recreational crossing, and they just completed another study, again, in the cold months. I don't know why they're not doing it in the warm months when it's needed, but regardless, even if one person is crossing there and gets hit by a car, that's important. As I was saying, it's eight lanes of traffic, eight lanes to cross, and there's a torrent of cars trying to make a left at the same time.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor? So...
Please.
I saw, I saw this gentleman earlier today, and I told him that my predecessor, Vinnie Ignizio's uncle, had gotten hit by a car at this location. And of all the people on Staten Island, 500,000 of us, the person standing behind me was Vinnie's uncle.
Are you serious?
What a coinkydink.
That's amazing.
It's a real issue, all I'm saying.
Sounds like a real issue, did you hear of the intersection?
We're familiar with it, it is one where there's very low pedestrian volumes, but if we're coming at the wrong time of year, we're happy to come back and take a look at the summer.
When, you think we should do it in summer? Just...
I believe all they need is a leading pedestrian interval, which would give pedestrians a head start crossing the street, and they've done two studies already, I don't see anything you need to wait, I think the studies probably would cost more than that low fix that's needed.
Okay, let's evaluate that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's a pretty straightforward solution, let's see if we can do it.
The last question goes to the purple shirt, right there. Better be a good one.
Hi, well, so you spoke about this, the vocational high schools and the programs all throughout the city. My son goes to New York Harbor School, which is on Governor's Island and is very involved in the Billion Oyster Project.
Yeah.
And he's in the diving program.
Oh, excellent.
And every Saturday, he has to go to extra school time, because he has to travel to Bushwick High School to learn how to dive in their pool, because a maritime high school doesn't have a pool. And I know there are some on Governor's Island, so I'm wondering if you've heard of it, and how you feel about that school not having a pool.
I didn't know that they, I'm going to be very straightforward to you, I know about the school, I've heard great things about the school, I didn't know they didn't have a pool, I didn't know they needed a pool for that particular kind of thing. If there's other pools on Governor's Island, you have a great idea here?
We've actually been working on this with the folks, the parents at Governor's Island, as well as, we've just announced recently that we're opening up a Harbor Middle School in Red Hook, we're looking at the possibility of putting a pool there as well, so we're working on it, we're actively working on it.
You ask a good question, and so, so follow up with her, because they're, obviously, they agree with you. Okay, thanks very much, everyone, happy holidays, everybody.